Open. I've turned the meeting open at 9:33 and start by acknowledging the Kandamooka people, who are the traditional custodians of land in which we meet. I would also like to pay respect to their elders, past and present, and extend that respect to any other Indigenous Australians who are present here today. Just a quick reminder, councillors, it's really important to you actually, because you may not realise that with the new camera setup, that even when you're not speaking, you might be sitting next to a speaker, that your faces are being viewed by people online. And I just would like to make you aware of, you know, those poker faces that some of us don't have, including myself. So just to be aware of once again, that this is livestreamed and you're reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to this chamber, as it does for our state and federal parliamentarians. And so please be cognizant of any comments which you make during the course of this meeting. Also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking, and I know that's a bit of a learning experience for us at the moment, but we'll be patient with how the setup is right now. And we ask any officers or councillors that are attending virtually to please use the mute button. I don't know that we have anyone today, please use the mute button if you're not speaking and you're online. In the event of an evacuation, I ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on your left and down the stairwell onto Bloomfield Street. For those who are here from our community, our public conduct during meetings also is covered under section 8.4 of our standing orders. And we just ask that members of the public present at a meeting must not without prior approval of the chairperson make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs. We ask you remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting. Please don't bring any meetings or placards, any signs or placards into the meeting that might cause a hazard to other people that are here. We ask you to be suitably dressed, turn all mobile devices to silent mode, and please leave the meeting if you need to take any calls. I do have a responsibility as chair to warn a member of public present at meeting who is not complying with any of these requirements, that I may, without such warning, require that person to leave the meeting and not return for a number of meetings as decided by the chairperson. And this could include future meetings. We haven't been advised of any leaves of access, and I look around the room, you're all here. And so with that, it's my great pleasure now to invite Pastor Neil Collier of Mount Cotton Community Fellowship, who is a member of our ministers' fellowship to lead council in a brief devotional segment. After you, Pastor.
Morning, everyone. Apologise for arriving in short today, I've just been serving pancakes to the kids at Cleveland High School and went really well. You know, we all have leadership in different areas, and I even think some of the people watching, just watching the proceedings, will also be leaders in many areas of our lives. I work for an organisation called Scripture Union. This is our little logo, it's a little lamp, so stylised lamp, you know, like the ones oil burners used to walk around. And that's because the motto of the organisation, 150 years they've been serving young people under this one motto, and that's Psalm 119 verse 105, says, "Your word is a lamp for my feet and a light for my path." And it's just a great reflection to think about as we are in leadership, of where do we go to when people are relying on us for good leadership? People are relying on us to make good decisions for their lives. That's what leadership is, means that what you're doing is affecting others. And so it doesn't matter if we're leading a family, leading a community group, leading a city, it's the same thing. We need a place where we can go to to draw on wisdom. The wisdom of this verse is that sometimes we need to draw on things outside ourselves, outside our own ideas. And in particular, this focuses us on God's word. Why is the Bible, this ancient old book, of any use really when it comes to leadership? It has shaped many leaders' thinking and reshaped people's thinking as they've gone through life. Because this book calls you to think about other people. It calls you to lead not in a way that allows yourself to elevate yourself in your eyes or in the eyes of others, but rather focuses on you of how do you serve? How do leaders serve others? And so it focuses us on things like love and peace and patience and goodness towards other people. And so I encourage you to think about those things as you're leading and always be mindful that they are lives, people living in little homes all over the place that are affected by our decisions, and it changes the way that they get to live their lives. When we do that well, we enhance their lives and we make it amazing. And I think one of the things that I've noticed in Redland City is their strong leadership in all areas of our city. From the city, from here right down into community groups and that, amazing people doing amazing things. And so let's just take a moment for quiet reflection and prayers. We pray for this meeting, but also those leaders across our city. Lord, we just thank you that you are with us. You don't leave us abandoned and just say, get on with it, work out what you want to do by yourselves. But you give us your word, you give us this incredible book, Lord, that we can read and ponder on and meditate on and shape our thinking. So we do pray for our leaders, Lord, I pray for the leaders here in this chamber, that you'd help them to lead for their communities with a heart of love and care. I pray, Lord, that they would be able to work together to get good outcomes for people wherever they find themselves. I pray for our leaders in community groups across the city, amazing, beautiful community groups dedicated to different parts of the community to making people's lives better. We pray you give them energy and focus. We thank you for charity workers, Lord, wherever they find themselves, and those that work as volunteers. We thank you for their dedication and leadership that they provide. Lord, we thank you for those that work very hard for young people, for those who suffer domestic violence, for the lonely, the elderly, for children. We just pray, God, that you'd strengthen those people in their resolve and their work, may they never become discouraged. I pray, God, that you may lead us and that your word will be a lamp for our feet and a light for our path. Amen. Thank you.
Well, moving on to our next item on the agenda and following on from Pastor Neil Collier's devotional segment that reflects on leadership, it's now my great pleasure to have recognition of some community service. And if I could reflect on the great work of Inspector Lindsay Kilpatrick in his service with the Queensland Police Service. Inspector Lindsay Kilpatrick has invested and achieved a great deal for our community with over five years of service here in the Bayside Patrol Group, which incorporates our Redland City. Inspector Lindsay Kilpatrick has given trust and support to our QPS officers in the Bayside Patrol Group and way beyond that. She's been a key driver with QPS support for the Redland area, including increasing QPS, Queensland Police Service, excuse the acronym here we have in government, increasing QPS resourcing on Southern Moreton Bay Islands and North Strabberack Island and Madera Bay with Dunwich Police, increasing QPS infrastructure on Southern Moreton Bay Islands and North Strabberack Island and Madera Bay, including increased QPS housing, being pivotal in the recruitment of current officers in charge of stations in Redland City, fantastic support in our domestic and family violence services and service collaboration. Lindsay's also been instrumental in the development and support of council's QPS CCTV memorandum of understanding and collaborative working agreements, and has been a stable presence and a strong advocate with our Queensland Police and Redland City Council quarterly discussions. He's also played a really important role in disaster management, particularly during the COVID pandemic, demonstrating the close cooperation shown between us and the police in the human and social aspects. And trust me, that was a really difficult time for all of us. And obviously also had to manage not only the health of our community, but those of his team. And if you don't know, that Madera closed down for a period and the police had to hang around and turn to harbour for quite some time. And it wasn't a pleasant experience, I'm sure, as COVID wasn't for many people in our country. And on a lighter note, Lindsay and I have a couple of things in common, I think. I didn't realise this until someone gave me these notes, but he's a bit of a muso. But as well as that, he likes to barbecue, that's also one of my passions. So I'm sure in his retirement, he'll be able to do just that and reflect on the great work and the legacy he's left as a police officer in our community. So could you please join me in giving him a round of applause firstly? Now, Inspector, I believe you want to say a few words before I do the honours of providing you with a gift from us.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for those kind words. I'd like to acknowledge yourself, the CEO and the councillors here today. Acknowledge the great team that you have with the council and the staff members that support everyone in the community and the members here from the community today. I feel honoured to be invited here and humbly thank you for the acknowledgement to my service, to the people of the Redlands coast. This is certainly a magnificent part of the world. I grew up in Winham, which is just outside of your boundaries, but it's always been a place close to my heart and it will continue to do that in my retirement. My tenure here is coming to an end, I'm taking 12 months long service leave before I'm forced to retire at age 60 next December. And my wife and I have got a few things planned, so I haven't taken that long service leave in the 39 years of my service in the QPS, the Queensland Police Force before that. So we're looking forward to that. I want to acknowledge the magnificent partnerships that we have had between the Queensland Police Service and the Redlands Council. Times have been challenging, but certainly rewarding both on a professional and a personal level for me. Together, as you said, we've managed many adversary situations from pandemics, floods, fires, other major disasters, manmade disasters. And I appreciate the work Mike Tate and the local disaster management group have provided us and vice versa, the support that we were able to provide to manage those events. Those issues also have pushed into crime issues, keeping the community safe and other community concerns, missing persons and the current scourge of youth crime and domestic violence, which is going to be ongoing. And QPS will continue to do that. I've certainly enjoyed the camaraderie working with yourself, Madam Mayor, and the councillors I've touched with and the team here, both from the old community safety team and the strengthening communities teams, and most recently the quarterly meeting we have at a strategic level between QPS and RCC. Thank you, Louise, and the team, for Jen and Byron and everyone for getting that up and running and that's progressing really well. So in closing, I thank you all for your friendship and support during my tenure and I wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
So Lindsay, we just wanted to leave you with a small token of our appreciation. It has been a quite difficult five years in so many ways, you know, starting with the tragedy on Australia Day 2021. And I know that you and I had lots of conversations around how our community was reacting to that. And that was all amongst COVID, which for our city, a city of islands, provided other challenges for us to overcome. I certainly personally am very grateful that I had the relationship with yourself to be able to, I guess, vent at times, but also understand that you had a job to do and collectively our collaboration made our city a much safer place in all circumstances. So there you go. I'm sure you're looking forward to your retirement. So just from us is a certificate of appreciation. And when you roll out your barbecue, yes, is it a smic or a barbecue?
It's a barbecue.
It's a barbecue, I think. Well, you can graduate to smickers, but that's what I've done. But it's a little recipe book here about, you know, things you can do at straddie, eat, drink and be straddie. And a little picnic rug you can roll out while you're enjoying your holiday.
That's amazing. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, thank you.
Which way? Oh, move the chair. Sorry. If you pick.
I'm going to take it from here, otherwise it's zoomed.
Oh.
So if I could get you to kind of center yourself to the precipice behind.
Well, today is just, this meeting is a great day for celebrating great achievements. So on to my next, if I may. This is a big team achievement, so I'd like to, if I may, recognise some wonderful people in our organisation. And today, we are acknowledging people who have been recipients of the Environmental Health Excellence Awards 2023. One of those things we sometimes take for granted, these people in the background, making sure that everyone's complying to make our community safe. And this particular award is in recognition of the outstanding contribution to the environmental health profession. The Redland City Council Health and Environment Team has won the Team of the Year 2023. And this particular award comes from a body that is a national peak and professional body for environmental health. And the Environmental Health Awards presented each year is to recognise excellence in that particular field. And for any team in the field, in fact, in Queensland, including private industry, federal, state, public health units and local governments, and our very own Redland City team have taken it out. So thank you for the work you do and congratulations. So just, just so we know what they do each and every day as they work for our community, this award recognises the work that's been done over a number of years, several years, pushing the boundaries with innovation. And a couple come to mind straight away with, you know, mozzies and things like that, delivering on high level prosecutions and engaging with the professionals through our commitment to universities, assisting other local governments, our state government, all while continuing to be proactive in our very own environmental health space. The award encompasses the work done in the environmental health field, including our environmental health officers, our mozzie team, policy, process and improvements, and of course, our amazing business support officers. So once again, let's take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank our great team who continue to push the boundaries, look for opportunities and who are setting a standard for the rest of the world in environmental health. Well done. So I'm wondering, is Kia still here? Oh, there you are. Is it easy for me to come down there or?
No.
No? Oh, okay. All right, come on down, team. We have a small token of appreciation for all of you to share. But wait, there's more. Okay, we also have another individual that's demonstrated excellence in their field. And today, we would like to acknowledge Jack Devlin, who is our Threatened Species Programmer Advisor, terrestrial eco-community and customer services. It's a long name. Can't make an acronym out of that one, I don't think. And he's been acknowledged by the Jenny Reeve Quiet Individual Achievement Award. And that award is presented to individuals who make significant contributions to biosecurity pest management in South East Queensland in a modest and often unacknowledged manner. These individuals achieve remarkable results with minimal fanfare and their efforts are only known to a select few, which is the quiet achievers like we have across the board in our organisation and they should go recognised by us. South East Queensland is divided into five management regions for invasive plants and animals. And the South East Queensland Pest Advisory Forum serves as a collaborative platform for this area, comprising officers, scientists and other stakeholders. This working group facilitates the exchange of ideas and advancements in the management of invasive species in South East Queensland. Council Officer Jack Devlin has won the prestigious accolade for his outstanding work in the pest management in our biosecurity programme. And Jack has been recognised as a seventh recipient of this individual award. And it is a testament to his exceptional dedication and expertise in the field of pest management. So once again, let us take a moment to thank Jack for his incredible work and acknowledge him for this remarkable achievement. We have a small gift for you as well, Jack. Today is a great indication of the work that goes unnoticed by many in our community, but we know that they make a distinct difference. So thank you for allowing us to acknowledge them today, councillors. And I'm sure they're grateful that we recognise the work they do on a daily basis. I think that was me done. I think there was another acknowledgement of recognition, councillor Talty.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Yes. I would like to acknowledge that at the recent LGAQ, which is Local Government Association of Queensland Annual Conference, Redland City Council and Redland City were acknowledged for the significant amount of work and funding that has been done in the area of domestic violence support services provision. The LGAQ has an award which is called the Alison Woolley, Alison Wooler Award, which was launched in 2020 to honour the legacy of the late Alison Wooler. Alison Wooler is a former mayor of Arrackoon Community, a community that has significant issues with regard to domestic violence and needs for family support. And at a time when there really was no support there in her community and for decades, Alison Wooler opened her home to women and children that needed a place to escape domestic violence. And so in honour of the work that she did in working towards those services, this award was named and is offered each year to a local government that has a significant contribution to improving local community services. Council was named as this year's local government winner of the Alison Wooler Award for its vocal advocacy and for a comprehensive response to domestic and family violence and actively championing the cause to raise awareness and funding for critical interventions. The award was presented to our mayor, Karen Williams, and the Chief Executive Officer, Andrew Chesterman, at the LGAQ 127th Annual Conference in Gladstone last month. And it was a significant recognition of not only the work of the council as an organisation, but the work of the mayor and the Office of Mayor and Councillor and the whole organisation in attracting services to Redland City. As someone who has been in council now for three terms, I remember when we had almost no domestic violence services and any women or children that needed referral or any person, I should say, that needed referral had to be referred to Beanley in order to find any kind of support or advice. And the simple fact of the lack of public transport between Redland and Beanley was enough to make sure that, you know, it was very limited and very difficult. And so through measures and fundraising and support for community organisations and fundraising through the mayor's and council dinner on Rouge and significant lobbying of state and federal ministers and departments, we now have a network which is vastly improved, including accommodation, crisis accommodation, referral services, counselling and so on. So I have here the award. For those who have not seen it, that is our award. And I'm sure that council will find a place to hang this certificate for the Alison Wooler Memorial Award in council somewhere where it can be acknowledged for the great work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Talty. And might I just ask the CEO to pass on our thanks and gratitude to the team on a regular basis? Thank you. All right, back to the agenda, councillors, if they have no more recognition. There is, that comes later, I think. Condolences. My apologies, councillor Boglari. There is a condolences section and I'll allow you to take this opportunity to provide condolences to the family of Jenny.
Thank you. And recently, we lost a very dear and valued community member. And I think today, with all the service awards, she'd be very proud to be remembered today. Today, I pay tribute to Jenny Marsden, a valued community member who we recently lost. Jenny was actively involved. Can you read it, please?
Sorry. I thought it would be our reading.
Humbly, I take these words from councillor Boglari and acknowledge Jenny Marsden and her family have lived in Bourkedale for quite some time. Councillor Boglari's words read, "Today I pay tribute. Jenny Marsden as a valued community member who we recently lost. Jenny was actively involved in our community in many areas, but none less than through the club she loved, Sir Optimists." Jenny became a Sir Optimist in 1996, 27 years ago. When Jenny joined the club, she would start each meeting with the Sir Optimist pledge. "I pledge allegiance to Sir Optimists and the ideals for which it stands. The sincerity of friendship, the joy of achievement, the dignity of service, the integrity of profession, the love of country." To those who knew Jenny, this pledge summed her up nicely, as Jenny not only lived up to, but indeed epitomised each of these ideals. Jenny was a friend to all and was the first to offer a helping hand to any needing help. Jenny not only became a core member of our local Sir Optimists Club, holding multiple positions, including president and treasurer. In 2008, she stepped up and became region president. In that role, she initiated and introduced the Best Practice Award for Clubs projects. The awards were presented at a major dinner by the governor of Queensland at the time, Penny Wensley. Jenny was a stickler for good governance and doing what was right, so it was no surprise that she introduced this award. As previously mentioned, Jenny was active in many organisations, not just Sir Optimists. She was an inaugural member of a number of business and professional organisations and was also a long-term member of forum communicators. She was justifiably one of the 11 prominent local women achievers selected to be profiled in today's Women of the Redlands. Now, the dignity of service. Her service to Sir Optimism was tireless and passionate and maybe even outstripped by her service to the community as Jenny initiated or contributed to multiple projects locally and regionally. There is a photograph of her standing in the pouring rain, collecting rubbish on Minjeraba on Cleanup Australia Day. The photo of this soaking woman was labelled "The Dignity of Service", and that was Jenny. Where she saw a need, she went into action. Internationally, Jenny was involved in many projects, one being collecting educational material for distribution to the children's orphanages in Vietnam. Jenny was passionate in regards to education as a powerful tool and was also involved in distributing information to students at our local schools regarding respect. Regarding the integrity of profession, Jenny was also a valued local business owner in Wellington Point from 1991 to 2017, where her optometrist business and for councillor Boglari personally and myself, Jenny cared, for councillor Boglari, cared for three generations of her family. Her patients trusted Jenny as her care for the person was evident. Jenny was also involved in the Wellington Point Traders Group, holding positions on their committee for over a decade. And she loved working in the village. She was greatly respected and a valued member of the Wellington Point Village Community. And then regarding the love of country, Jenny was a genuine environmentalist dedicated to the Sir Optimist Programme area of environment. She supported wildlife carers and actively participated in all of the club's environmental programmes, projects and advocacy. Jenny also shared the club's dedication to understanding of indigenous history and issues and reconciliation with local First Nations peoples. Jenny, you will be missed by your community as well as your Sir Optimist sisters and friends, but not forgotten. People have their memories. We have our books, displays and banners to remind us of your valuable contribution. I hand back to councillor Boglari.
Thank you, Paul, for reading it. Thank you. And if I might just add that, of course, Sir Optimists and Zontas have been very involved in Duneron Rouge and Jenny was a great participant in those events. So she will be missed and certainly we pass on our condolences to her friends and her family. Thank you. Okay, council's next item on the agenda is a receipt and confirmation of minutes. If I may have a mover and seconded that the minutes of a general meeting held on the 11th of October 2023 be confirmed. Mover, move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Any items of correctness? There being none, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Next item is just a reminder of your declarations for prescribed conflict of interest, declarable conflicts of interest. Councillors, you're reminded of your responsibilities in relation to these interests, details of which you should be aware of in Chapter 5B of the Local Government Act 2009. And details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. And this means any prescribed or declarable conflict of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting also needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors of each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting, so that can be achieved. And of course, you can make those declarations anytime throughout the meeting. Haven't been advised of any, so I'll now hand over to the CEO for matters outstanding from previous general meeting.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Item 7.1, the notice of motion in the investigation into a location for a wildlife hospital is listed today as item 15.4 on the agenda. There are three matters coming to future meetings of council. They are the subordinate local law on local government-controlled areas, facilities and roads, the 2023 community consultation, the notice of motion on council's programmes related to the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act and the draft Bourkedale Community Creasing Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report.
Thank you, CEO. There is no merril minutes, so we now head to public participation and have been advised of one. So if I may, in accordance with Section 6.10 of the council meeting standing orders, we allow 15 minutes to by resolution to permit members of the public to address local government on matters of public interest relating to the local government. So if I may have a mover that we have a mover and second at the meeting, standing orders be suspended for 15 minutes to allow that to occur. Move councillor Bishop, seconded councillor Galloway. Those in favour? And those against? That's carried unanimously. So I might now ask for Mr Paul McGowan from Redland Bay to approach the microphone. And just before you speak, Mr McGowan, just to read you the rules, if I may. I'll just give you a quick rundown of how we deal with public participation, because there is signage around the chambers that indicates how it's dealt with. However, you may not have come across that yet, but we normally require a person wanting to address the meeting to state their name and suburb or the organisation they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. We will recall this information in the minutes of the meeting, so it's really important for you to know that it will be available in council's administration building and published on our council's website. Also, just a quick reminder that it is being live streamed and that by speaking, you acknowledge and agree that this meeting will be seen live in the public domain. So state name and suburb, organisation you represent, on the topic you wish to speak about. We ask you to stand, act and speak with decorum. Please be respectful and courteous. Make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. I do have some responsibilities as chairperson, which is to consider each application on its merits, consider any relevant matter in making my decision to allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Only those members of the public who have an approved application are able to do so and details of how it applies on our website. And also, I have responsibility to determine the maximum number of speakers based on the number of persons wanting to speak and time available. And I also have one further responsibility, which is the ability to withdraw the approval to address council before the time period has elapsed. Just a reminder that debate and discussion can't be entered into at this time. So with that, over to you, McGowan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Paul McGowan. I reside at 157 Serpentine Creek Road, Redland Bay. Family of nine, including myself. We've been there for 26 years. And we're here today to address council regarding the proposed development by Villawood in relation to the road and drainage issues that we've got serious concerns about. Now, the road basically is fairly straightforward. The Serpentine Creek Road proportion of the planning is obviously SAV's responsibility and Kid Street will be council's responsibility. Now, the proposed concept plan indicates a traffic island at the entrance of Kid Street. This extends some 45 metres, which will deny us access to a driveway to a relative's apartment. Our second driveway is sited approximately 80 metres upon Kid Street, but with no clear provisions for safe entry and exit. And furthermore, there is no indication of any acoustic fencing to a private property or buffer zones due to the fact that there will be multiple lanes on Serpentine Creek Road. There's no indication of pedestrian footpaths to the north of the proposed intersection and no slip lane or merging lanes to exit to the north of Kid Street. The volume of traffic that we believe that will be generated both from Villawood and Stockland combined developments will be approximately 4,500 movements daily. And by their own calculations, will be 20 seconds per vehicle. That would take 25 hours. Now, if we estimate at peak times, approximately 2,000 movements between 6am and 9am, 3pm and 6pm, at the 20 seconds per vehicle, that would take 11 hours. So we're just concerned about the safety issues in relation to the proposed concept design that they have proposed a new amendment to that design. We would feel it would be more efficient if they replicated something like a scenic road intersection to accommodate the volumes, bearing in mind that there are already 6,500 vehicle movements on. Bearing in mind that there are already six and a half thousand vehicle movements on Serpentine Creek Road at present. That's about all on that subject. The next subject would be the serious drainage concerns and discharging from Villawood. It's proposed development of two hundred and sixty homes. Now, council have acknowledged that the proposed flood modelling is not represented on the application because it does not form true reflection as they have failed to adopt the current culvert size of twelve hundred by nine hundred by three of them and have adopted three by four hundred and fifty millimetre pipes, which were some twenty years ago in relation to our previous concerns with flooding and diversion of water. Now, Villawood have proposed that they will have bio retention basins that will accommodate two thousand nine hundred cubic metres and will discharge onto the council-controlled land and culverts at a rate of three point five cubic metres per second and will take all but six minutes to discharge, if only it rained for six minutes in Redlands. Now, also included, or what has not been taken into account on this flood model is land upstream from Langley's, which also discharges through Villawood's lawful point of discharge, which would accommodate approximately sixty homes and generate a further six hundred cubic metres of discharge, bringing the total discharge to three thousand five hundred cubic metres on the council-controlled land. Now, the flood model presented by Villawood has been calculated on an average rainfall over a twenty-four hour period of ten and a half inches. Why inches? That's two hundred and sixty-seven millimetres. This average rainfall has been taken from an example manual scripted in Orlando, Florida. Our average rainfall, daily rainfall should be taken from pluviographs based in the Redlands. And that study should be conducted as per our rainfall. Now, furthermore, although they deny the fact that it's going to be, I'm a bit shaky. The three and a half cubic metres per second, which we think, to say the least, is flawed by a very well-respected engineer within council some twenty years ago due to our previous concerns. Mister Tom McAdley conducted flood studies in relation to this land at the time which at present is still undeveloped. That flood study indicated that, I'm going to put that down, I'm shaking. That flood study indicated an estimate of ten point six cubic metres per second that will flow or discharge from that land on the council-controlled land. And obviously, that's going to take six minutes. That's ten point five cubic metres every single second. That would equate to about three Olympic-sized swimming pools every six minutes that council would have to control and take liability over. Now, that's on undeveloped land. Once you develop land, you will reduce that capacity to control by at least sixty percent. That would make this at least sixteen cubic metres. Now, I'm not saying Tom at the time is one hundred percent correct, but even if we go on the ten point six cubic metres, that would mean Villawood would have to have retention basins on that land to accommodate between ten and sixteen thousand cubic metres of retention. They've only accounted for two thousand nine hundred cubic metres. And Tom also advised at the time we'd be better if there was at least a drainage vent or better still a drainage reserve owned by state government south or where council will be resuming liability and then it passes our property on, on the neighbour's side. So we're just hoping that council are going to action these concerns because it poses a serious health and safety risk to property in person and will avoid further disputes in the event of an approval. I thank you for all your time and more importantly, councillor Julie Talty for her continued and ongoing support.
Thank you, Mr McGowan. Thank you. Councillors, may I now have a mover and second that we resume our meeting standing orders? Please move councillor Edwards, seconded councillor Baglari. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Our next item is petitions and presentations. I believe we have a number to be presented. I'll start with you councillor Hewlett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a petition from residents requesting a tree be removed from Cheshire Street, Victoria Point. We, the undersigned, request that council look into our request for removal of the gum tree located at four Cheshire Street. We ask council to bar the roots from the gum tree leading to our house, which caused damage lifting up the pavers and into the foundations of the house. We did repairs photos supplied. Once again, the roots are lifting pavers on house. They declined to bar roots because of damage to the gum tree. Um, I'd like to move that this petition is of operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
So moved by councillor Hewlett, seconded by councillor Bishop. Um, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Councillor Mitchell is absent from the room. Item, the next item is another petition from councillor Edwards.
A petition from residents requesting a pedestrian crossing at Broadwater Terrace, Redland Bay. We, the undersigned, request that council adequately address the lack of safe crossing for pedestrians, mobility impaired elderly and skilled children alike with a marked pedestrian crossing in addition to poor traffic control on Broadwater Terrace, Redland Bay, in line with the recent development. I'd like to move that petition is of an operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
Moved by councillor Edwards, seconded councillor Mackenzie. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Councillor Gollay, you have a petition?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this petition is from residents requesting road access from Cleveland Redland Bay Road. Uh, petition is, we, the undersigned, request that council grants access from three hundred and fourteen to three hundred and eighteen Cleveland Redland Bay Road for the new race development that is being undertaken in Arctic Street, Thornlands. This new development will add thirty-plus cars to the street. We are concerned for our safety, street congestion and hazard for emergency vehicles. Uh, we elect to have dual access. Um, the petition, uh, it's be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration and a report to the local government. Thank you.
That's your motion, councillor Gollay. Move so, seconded by councillor Edwards. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. I haven't been advised of any, um, order of business, motions to change the order of business today, so we'll go straight to our reports, which brings us to item thirteen point one, the October twenty twenty-three monthly financial reports. Councillor Edwards would like to move it, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Edwards?
Uh, just briefly, fine, eh. Um, it's, it's a good set of numbers and all KPIs being met. But there's one thing I'd like to note there that, uh, uh, council has invested fifty million dollars in a term deposit with the Commonwealth Bank of Australia's return of three hundred and sixty-five days at a rate of five point two five percent. Uh, that's a negotiated rate. Currently, they're for the same term, they're offering four point seven five, so it's a good deal for council. And that'll deliver two million six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest, which is money that we don't have to seek from our ratepayers. And I think that's an excellent strategy that the, uh, uh, chief financial officer has, has done.
Councillor Edwards, any speakers against? Question that hasn't been asked before? Clarification, councillor.
Yeah, just clarification on the question. When we were in discussion, and thank you very much, officers, for the report. It's a good set of numbers. Um, when we were discussing on page six of fourteen, there was a, a matter that has been closed out with regards to Willard's Farm Restoration Programme, but I'm just wondering if we could ask for, um, officers have sent through a breakdown of the technical drawings, but I just wonder given the size and scale of the significance of that project, whether we might just be able to release for the public an overview of the projects that will be delivered as part of that, just to break down so that we can have some understanding because it's a, a very important part of the, um, the Willard Farm Restoration Programme. And just so that we can be clear what will be delivered, because there's a significant amount of money that's been contributed.
My, my understanding is officers did respond to that question, but I'm happy for it to be.
We have the response. What I'm asking for is a public facing, just a breakdown of what, what's likely to happen by the time that that money's expended and the project is delivered, if that's possible. No need for an answer on that right now, but.
Yeah, we're getting nods around the room, so. Um, any other speakers against? No questions. I'll hand back to you, councillor Edwards. Anything further to add or put the motion, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Um, and councillor Tolty has left the room. Uh, next item is fourteen point one, which is the, uh, Redlands Regi- Redlands Coast Regional Sport and Recreation Precinct, revised master plan, a mover and seconded for that. Thanks. Moved councillor Baglari, seconded councillor Mitchell. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Baglari?
No, I'm happy to speak to it. I, I was just surprised councillor Tolty left the room because she probably wanted to speak to it, I'd say. I thought, yeah, um, she's been very, she's been very involved in this, um, project as we have all been. Um, look, we often talk about back to basics and I think that's what's happened, um, with this actual project. Uh, we have a shortfall in our sporting needs across the city in all, in all our sporting needs. Um, this is certainly not going to tick the boxes on all accounts, but at least it's a beginning um, with the number of fields and that we have here. It's, um, disappointing, um, as this was very much the original, um, project. Uh, it did increase in size, um, disappointing that some of those points, um, for the various sports that we wanted to include now aren't included. But what we found as, um, necessary, and here's councillor Tolty, um, what we found is necessary at least is still being included in this report and it's become very realistic and deliverable. And that's what our community needs, is to actually get something on the ground happening. So I'm supporting this as it stands today.
Just an item of clarity, I don't think the original draft master.
Yeah, well, that's what I said. I thought you, but you left the room.
I'll, I'll hand over to you in a second, councillor Tolty. I just want some clarity, please, in regards to the, the draft master plan didn't incre- didn't increase in size.
Oh, well, we in- included bits from, initially we were talking about netball and the two footballs and then we, we added along the way.
The draft master plan, the original was, um, what went out to community consultation. Can I just get the officers to confirm that, please?
Not, not prior to, um.
Sorry, councillor, just to.
March twenty twenty.
Just to see clarity, your question, are you referring to the original master plan?
Yeah, the original, original one, which had the football fields and that in it.
Yeah, look, I might defer to Nicole if that's right, just because it was sort of predates me and my role in the project, but.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, we, the master plan originally was done on a desktop and then there was a change between the original master plan back in twenty and detailed design, which always happens as part of normal, um, capital delivery and project, um, development. Um, I don't believe there's a change since.
No, there hasn't been a change since. I'm saying that we are delivering in this, what our initial intent was, is to get some more football and soccer fields, not soccer fields, indoor touch, sorry, touch football. Thank you. So I wasn't prepared to speak to it, so I didn't expect to be.
However, can I just be clear that the.
I'm only speaking to it because you left the room.
The bike, the bike, the bike, the criterion was always part of the master plan.
In the original master plan back in twenty twenty?
Correct. So just being clear, because that's what's being removed. Correct. Councillor Tolty, unfortunately, um, you went in the room for that motion, so I'll hand over to you as local councillor, because I know that you wanted to, um, voice your concerns about where this is heading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry.
Now, speaker four.
Happy to be either.
You speak against, councillor, you're more, more than welcome to.
Apologies, I had an upset stomach and I had to get something for it. I thought I had time because councillor Bishop was talking and we know that takes time.
That's point of order. Just, just let's.
Perhaps withdraw, perhaps withdraw that comment, councillor Tolty.
Withdrawn. So what I wanted to say here today, councillors, is that we're aware of the history and I'm going to ask you to be with me because I, I feel like it needs to be recapped for the.
So is this for or against?
Speaking against.
Against.
Sorry. Over several years, we're all aware that council has sought to improve the ongoing lack of community recreation and sporting facilities in our city. This has been calculated at around a thirty-eight or forty percent lack, and that was calculated some five years ago. So I'm sure it's worse than that now with our population increases. As part of this process and seeking to ensure the best use of public resources, council first undertook our whole of city asset review, which looked at all of our current facilities and how all of our spaces could be better utilised to support clubs that with growth and support, uh, practices and sports that had no home. The purchase and master planning of the Heineman Road Regional Sporting and Recreation Facility was a significant outcome and that work created key outcomes necessary to the provision of the needs of the whole city uh, for community by actions such as moving our rugby league out of Pinklands to allow a much-needed expansion to provide for the expansion of netball and equestrian facilities there. Further, this would move thousands of players in touch rugby out of the showgrounds, allowing them to meet their needs and then allowing us further to meet the needs of others in Cleveland. Our city's wildlife credentials are so good that Minister Plebisek, Plebisek came to the city last week to announce support of the federal and state governments to support the development of what will be a premier wildlife hospital for the Greater South, um, Brisbane region here in Redland. Unfortunately, that recognition does not extend to our broader city through this EPBC assessment process. This EPBC requirement from the federal government reflects the downgrade of the Heineman Road Sporting and Recreation Precinct from our original master plan, which was a spectacular opportunity to meet the needs of our local community and the broader region to a basic provision of what would be lovely, but basic, mediocre even. It will be nice and it will be the best it can possibly be, but that will not negate the fact that we've been through a significant statutory process, taking our community on the journey to design the master plan that we had previously adopted. We were taking a previously highly degraded paddock that was used for fattening cattle for decades. We were providing seventy-eight percent of that site, that degraded site for reserves and tracks and trails and the environment and just seeking to use twenty-two percent of the site to answer some eighteen percent of that forty percent lack in community facilities. The site was to be transformed into a region of, a regionally significant hub for cycling sports, criterion, BMX mountain biking, as well as play, pump tracks, roller sports, trail walking, running and horse riding. Community recreation spaces, picnic, water play, environmental education and appreciation. I think everyone would agree that the original master plan is spectacular. And while I'm disappointed, I appreciate the significant work done by our local officers in trying to manage the process of the EPBC and salvage as much of the plan as can possibly be done. This is reflected in the plan before us today. We still have this plan. In, we still have in this plan the world-class playing fields that will greatly increase the capacity of our rugby league and touch football clubs and provide them the much-needed state-of-the-art club facilities, not the least of which is going to allow them to meet much-needed women's sport and change facilities. However, at this point, that is all we can guarantee will be salvaged from our awesome master plan approved through public consultation by our community. The federal minister needs to answer to our community and explain why their assessment has placed no value in the master plan and has simply focused on offset. Has placed no value in the master plan and has simply focused on offset planting. We have this plan before us today because we are advised that in order to go ahead and build the master plan as previously approved. Our ratepayers will be required to purchase and create offset planting of up to two hundred hectares. As we have such a high value uh in environment in the Redlands. And this has been the case for successive decades, we are being punished, there is no way for us to meet this requirement locally. So the simple explanation of why we have this downgraded master plan presented to us today. Is because we can see no value in our community having to bear up to twenty million dollars of costs to provide. And purchase for offset planting up to two hundred hectares of land in another local government area. This is madness. How will sterilising a farm from production in another council area help our local wildlife? Simple answer is it won't. We are further advised that a change to the way the Federal Department of Environment provides for offset planting. Now requires that any offset planting be carried out at least two years before we can commence the work on the project. With the great need of our community, we don't think we can afford to wait two years for some trees to grow in another local government area. Before we can start building facilities for our, our desperate need for local sport and recreation land in the Redland. So twenty million dollars of offset planting in some other area. And a, and a lesser, or a lesser outcome can be produced in the next twelve months, so here we are, this is why we have this plan. Instead, the federal government has no consideration of the excellent and substantial environmental record of this local government. We are treated the same as an industrial park or an open cut mine. Having our green grassy sports field and parkland assessed as exclusion area. The federal department considers that wildlife will not be able to traverse the site. Will not cross the fields through the dark of night and graze on the grass.
Point of order, please.
What's your point of order councillor?
Um, thank you, ma- madam, I'm, I'm sure we're. This is um, time limit has expired on this one for, for, for and against.
Thank you, I'll make sure I implement that councillor, if you want, just leave, that's a point of order, Madam Mayor. Uh councillor, if you might just wrap up, thank you, and I, and I did ask for some. Uh, thank you, availability of time, thank you. And I think this is a very significant and important thing for our.
Uh, yes, standing orders, I, I've had this situation and not been allowed to speak.
Councillor, I should wrap up, thank you.
Thank you. Federal, the federal department considers that wildlife will not be able to traverse the site, will not cross the fields through the dark of night and graze on the grass. And as a result, our cyclists will continue to take their lives in their hands on backed-up state roads. Our BMX kids will not have the opportunity to enjoy a new facility that may produce local Olympians, the BMX.
Shh, I've asked her to wrap up and that's. Councillor, please wrap up.
The BMX club unable to move to a new state-of-the-art facility, the space they currently occupy in Kapalaba will not be available for consideration. For use of other groups. We know there is a desperate need for basketball to have a competition quality home.
Point of order. My point of order, thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me, in accordance with standing orders at seven point six point one. My pointer of order is the time limit has expired. None of us would be allowed to continue.
That's not exactly the truth.
Uh, I have never been allowed to continue to go on. It will be interesting to see if others will be today.
That have been interrupted three times.
Can we please keep with our standing orders, time limit has expired.
Standing orders also require you not to speak over the chair, just to be clear, thank you. Quickly councillor Tolty, you, you need to wrap up, I'm going to hand over to officers to explain some of the detail of the new legislation.
I am bitterly disappointed on behalf of our community that any democratic process would expect. That our Department of Environment has a job to do, so the Minister for Sport, Annika Wells, should be out there. Looking at this assessment and, and balancing the needs of our community. We have a process where after council, with the substantial support of the state and the local MP, Minister Debrini. We have gone to public consultation, we've had a long feedback process and master planning process.
Councillor, you need to end.
I've got my last paragraph, Madam Mayor. Not perfectly happy to ignore these councillors and.
Thank you.
Yeah, councillor, when you've got something.
Councillor Hewlett, that sort of conduct, councillor Hewlett, that sort of behaviour. Constitutes inappropriate behaviour at a meeting. Just as a warning, I gave you that warning earlier. Thank you councillor Tolty, I'm going to hand over to officers to explain the changes in the EPBC and mine. Chris and I can be just, and obviously it's a really important discussion for us because this is going to be coming to all of your playgrounds councillors. As a result of the change in the way they're actually assessing um this part of the act.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak here. The, the EPBC legislation is very complex, um and I think what we as officers try to work through and balance is obviously. Environmental um values that we place upon our city and our desire to do the right thing by the environment, but also the opportunity to provide. Crucial infrastructure that our city requires, whether it's sporting infrastructure or future road infrastructure as well, so for us, we do see this as being. A critical balance point and, and some of the points that the councillor made around. The long um investment that our city has made into the environment is potentially now playing against us because so many of the values. Uh, that we would now have opportunities to offsetting in our city have been removed because we've actually already planted those out, so that, that's certainly playing out the. The challenge with the legislation is that it's probably not so much that the legislation has changed, but more the species listings continue to evolve, and that's a forever evolving thing, the key thing. For us in this process was that certainly after we bought the site, after council adopted the last master plan. Some species listings did change and notably the koala was on that, which has had an implication for how we then developed the site. That continues to evolve and that's kind of the challenge that we as officers face, it's never a static process, so. Whilst the listing changed early last year, in February, March of last year. The federal government released um some guidelines and had assessed the impacts in Koala late last year, they've now further released a Koala Recovery Plan. Every single one of these releases continually changes the way that they are seeking to administer and practically apply that. Uh, some of the points that the council are also raised around how the offsets are managed. Under the previous version, I guess, previous government and certainly how the EPBC was being managed, you could go through the EPBC process and get a condition. Which would require you to provide offsets and it gave you a two-year period to go and source and find those, um. That's no longer the way the current version of the department under the current Labour government is applying that. What they're choosing to do is say you must bring those offsets to us at the time they're assessing the impact, which is the two-year delay that. The council is recognising, and that, that is a real challenge for local government, because what. Probably relative to our um commercial partners or commercial um players is that. We can't just go and buy parts of the land willy-nilly, um it's obviously a big process for us to do that. So we need to be able to demonstrate you have secured that land definitively to bring that to the federal government, which could mean we have to go and buy. Farms or passes of land outside of our city of, of the scale and magnitude we're talking about. I think the other complexity too is what the, the way that they're interpreting what is koala habitat, and, and that's again a moving feast. Whilst we appreciate and, and place high values of our conservation areas and where we would see um and proudly recognise we have strong koala habitat. The, the current way that they're choosing to apply that is also recognised in that large passes of, of grass um. In between habitat areas is now defined by them as being, being actual habitat, so. It, depending on way they choose to administer, um and at the extreme end of that, it could be any parcel of, that we own. Um, we're seeking to do whether that is a park or roadside vegetation, pretty much anything we would do in our city wouldn't necessarily need to consider CPBC. Uh, referral obligations and I think more and more often we will find that we will have to refer, um now. That's not to say that we're not choosing to do that and respect environmental values, it's just recognising that the time consequences to that. And more importantly, the cost implications, because offsets are incredibly expensive and complex to deliver, um. And having spoken to a consultant this week, he's doing a lot of work across local government, she said she's got more than a dozen projects for other local governments, she's not got one of them across the finish line yet. Um, and some of them have been going for three years and those aren't projects of our scale, those are small projects, so. I guess we flag and, and, and support some of the views of councillor Tolty that as a city, we would like to on behalf of our ratepayers move with confidence. To deliver the essential infrastructure, we are concerned around, you know, some of the implications of this act being applied. You know, outside of the interpretation, now it's interpretation how officers are choosing to apply in particular offsets, so. But I think my key message would be is we certainly recognise the importance of environmental values and we don't shy away from that as our organisation, so we're not trying to, please don't interpret any of my comments as being. Uh, anti-the legislation or, or that we are not supportive of environmental values, we think it is just needs to be a balance of protecting our values but ensuring. That we can provide the necessary community infrastructure for our residents, um. And whether that's sporting infrastructure, because the next, next time we have this discussion, it could very well be about a future road upgrade that needs to occur that we can't do. Because we need to then run through those processes as well, or it could be a park that's trying to be upgraded or something like that, so it is a, a moving feast, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Speaker four, councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The original master plan was indeed spectacular. Um, and it was great disappointment that circumstances have changed and uh today. While we have an opportunity to be part of something rather than be part of nothing. And I'll be taking the opportunity to be part of something, I am bitterly, bitterly disappointed. For our community that we are unable or it is much more difficult to provide for our current future generations. Because of um the interpretation and the unworkable policies of new legislation. Tough decisions have had to be made to scale it back, um because of the changes. Um, Redlands does take our environmental stewardship very seriously. And what we're asking our federal government to do is eighty percent of the taxation revenue and all the power. Is just to help us deliver for our communities, we are all Australian citizens, we're not just Redlanders. We're Queensland Australian citizens, Queensland government supported us with some planning for the area and I appreciate that. Um, but here we are with our federal government with unworkable policy and legislation. That's an impediment to delivering for those Australian citizens, those children, those teenagers, those middle-aged people like myself and. And the elderly who are not going to have opportunities or they'll be greatly expensive and impactful to their rates. Or delayed because of that legislation. Um, the handout, the, the report actually tells the great story and I acknowledge councillor Tolty Swartz and, and, and. And Chris, uh general manager of Ants, uh great explanations there. The positives of moving forward with what we have in front of us. Helps greatly with the development of other areas such as Pinklands Rugby League. Uh, the showgrounds, touch football, de-camping out onto Heineman Road and allows master planning of the showgrounds to progress. There is still a lot of good in what we have before us. As angry as I am that we've had to fall back to this position because of external factors. Um, it's with great excitement that I'll support this today to enable us to move forward. With what the opportunity we have in front of us. I do want to again point to what we've lost here. With the cycling precincts, BMX and the um, the criterion track. These are sports and opportunities for tens of thousands of Redlanders. They are billion-dollar industries around the world. The health benefits and the safety improvements to the, the mums, dads, kids and sports cyclists that might use these places. Um, would have been incredibly beneficial, I'm, I'm very, very disappointed. Uh, we have an incredible community of triathletes, cyclists, recreational cyclists. And to not be able to progress these precincts, um it, it. It's nothing short of a tragedy in the short term and will add costs uh to the planning into the future. And I'm really grateful to those communities that have been working with council in the planning of this precinct. Who are now going to continue to work council, with council into the future as we try and find. The fallback position, which hopefully will be also a good one, but how disappointing we haven't been able to deliver it now. So I will be supporting this today, um but not without a final comment. That I'm equally angry as councillor Tolty has been, the history um is clear. But we will move forward to the best of our ability for our community because that's what we're here to do, thank you.
Thank you, speaker four. Oh, sorry, speaker against, pardon me. Okay, well, we have got people with questions that they'd like to ask councillor Tolty, you were first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a two-part question if I may, first of all, is it fair to say that in November twenty twenty two. When council referred the project for EPBC assessment under the previous treatment and given the project. Uh, met and indeed exceeded the requirements of all state government environmental protection requirements, that council was confident in referring. And passing this through to the federal EPBC, uh that there would be little need to intervene in the master plan. Secondly, I'd like the officer please to outline the, the, the process of feedback from the federal environment department. Because my understanding is that whilst they have come back with uh comments such as we feel we would treat it in this way. Or if you apply for this, we think the response will be that. We in fact have nothing for the public and the community to read that shows the justification and the need for this to be downgraded. And, and in doing that, I think that it will, the end result will be simply, when, when someone asks us in years to come, they'll say. Council only applied for this, because that's the end, the end plan that we're putting in is this master plan today. So, I would like to understand the difference between putting the master plan in as previously adopted and having the federal government respond. And altering the plan as we intend to do, uh based on what's essentially under the table feedback. Is that not the case? Thank you.
Chris, you able to respond to those two questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, um so in, in answering the first question, um look. Officers were obviously very confident to do a referral based on what we understood the way the act was being applied, um. But that's not an exact science because it's up to officer interpretation of, of how that, at the time we made the referral and probably consistent with how. Much of what we do across the city in relation to our projects, we've certainly always taken the view of. And more traditional view of, you know, the trees are the habitat that we're looking to protect, we were very cognizant of the number of trees that were being impacted. And we had done the work to understand how it would occur, probably what we didn't understand at the time was how the federal government would elect to interpret or infer. The land between the trees, being the grassland and, and the paddock area as then being um habitat that they're seeing as lost, which has. The significant, um perhaps segueing into your second question around then, um calculation of the offset, so. It's certainly true, um we, we are having a lot of discussions with the federal government. Um, probably no different to the way we have lots of discussions with private developers in our role as assessment officers of applications when they come to us. Whether you call them pre-lodge meetings or just ongoing um dialogue, we don't have any, we have an information request from the federal government. Which probably outlines all of those things, so probably to correct, correct you there councillor. We certainly have a formal information request, which is the preliminary documentation part that outlines some of the things that we need to do. Which does telecast how they think we should be interpreting assessing that, so it's not all um just um verbal feedback, so. The process from here is that now, should you ultimately elect to um endorse this master plan today. We will respond to the preliminary documentation that we have um pathway that we've been assigned under the, by the process. Uh, and that will instigate processes, now that could very well be, that will be sufficient in our response and they may go through and approve that. They may um elect to ask further information of us, the same way we as officers. Might ask applicants for a development application, further information requests is a pretty common process that we will bounce backwards and forwards from here, so. Um, I, I think what you're trying to ask me is, you know, wh- why are we preemptively changing the, the master plan as opposed to doing that? Um, for me, the, the simple answer is, I, I think from all that we're seeing, um not just from our application, but working across the industry and looking at how. The government um is administering this across other projects is we see the offsets being an inevitable outcome. It's not a, a simple matter of how they're going to separate from our side, it's something that they're doing consistently, we've spent a lot of time engaging with. Uh, a lot of, a lot of experts in the industry, attending a lot of, so this is a consistent approach, so. We're not doing, we believe this is the best interest of the project and therefore our community to deliver the sports fields in the quickest. Um, pathway is to do this now, otherwise we could spend significant amount of time going backwards and forwards um and getting to this outcome. Eventually in any case, so we don't lightly as officers make this recommendation, we do so based on a whole bunch of, of consultation and work. We believe that this is the direction that, that we will end up within from the government perspective, we don't believe there's a lot of um. Sort of latitude in there that we will get a different, different outcome than we're, we're expecting now, if that answers your question.
Councillor Bishop, you have a question?
Um, if I may, forgive me, I'll, I'll frame it in, in regard to speaking against the item, although I am in, in support. Uh, generally, um.
Just, you, you put your hand up for a question, um I've, I've moved on to questions.
Can I, can I speak against?
Well, I, I gave you that option earlier and you didn't take it up, so.
No, I didn't, because I was.
I, I probably, I probably prefer, now that we've gone to that, that process for questions that you framed as a question.
Okay, um, my main question. Okay, um, my main question in regards to this, I, I'm pleased to see a reduction to deal with the outstanding. Legacy concerns of the um touch football and rugby fields, which are a huge issue. Um, and one of many in the city, um, and there are many other sports that do need to have their needs addressed and they're not all billion dollar industries either. Um, but I, I think my question really is around, um, this master plan does not touch on finances. And uh I've raised previously.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Your point of order councillor. Eight point two point one. This question. Has been asked and answered multiple times by this councillor in preparation for this council meeting. Thank you. Okay, so councillor, you might want to move, if, your next question?
Well, we're in a public session and I think this is an important question. Master planning, when I do.
Well, let's go straight to the answer because it has been provided to everyone in the room a number of times.
Budgets.
Councillor, while, while the chair is speaking, while the chair is speaking, I have an officer. Repo- um, respond to how we deal with master plans collectively across the, across the city. Um, and I'll get that response again for you so that it's clear and it's on public record.
Uh, point of order, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'm calling for consistency because councillor Talty.
What, what number, councillor?
What number? Seven point six point one. So we, so not, so contributing these meeting motion standing orders, you have pulled up, uh.
That's not a.
You've called up councillor Bishop for having asked these questions in workshop. Councillor Talty, both her questions. Were answered in workshop and I knew the answers given by.
Thank you councillor.
In both of those. So can we have consistency?
Point of order councillor, I'll get the officer to respond. Thank you.
Well, then I will bring a motion of dissent if necessary.
You're free to do that councillor, I'll get the officer to respond. If you wanted to move a motion of dissent, it's your, it's your opportunity.
I'm asking for fairness please.
Uh, exactly, and I'm asking you to, I'm asking you, just remind you of the inappropriate behaviour in a meeting councillor, I haven't called it yet, but I am happy to do it. Could I have, um, could I please have a response to the question that's been asked many times before and have put on public record? Thanks.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor for the question which I, I, I think ultimately be what is the eventual cost for the project. Um, so probably what we would say is this. No, it's the indicative notional amount that we are intending to embark upon in a highly constrained environment.
Councillor Bishop, uh, you don't need to.
The order of magnitude of understanding residents is clear.
That question has also been answered here. It's called a ten year capital plan, um, cap, uh, capital plan.
But the project has been revised.
Councillor, we haven't, councillor, I don't think, you, you clearly don't understand the process. I will ask the officer to respond.
That's not true. I'm trying to do what I can under.
Point of order, Madam Mayor. Seven, six, one, councillor has immediately ceased speaking once point of order.
It is point of order councillor, so I've asked, now asked the officer to give you the response that has been given. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I think what, what we would say is that as, as a master plan, um, level of strategy that we do. All across our organisation, gone many, many projects, whether it's a project at this scale or, or, or other elements, um. We don't have definitive um values or costs for that because what we're working towards is what the vision that the community is after. Um, and the council believes response to those things. Now, I think as, as I indicated to you earlier this week, I've made a commitment that we will get you those costs. And certainly the opportunity for those will come through before you then execute um the contracts to deliver this precinct. So there'll be multiple touch points for you to understand what this will cost our organisation to deliver. I don't have all of that information at hand today because we don't have the new delivery strategy, which is consistent with how we would normally deliver a master plan. The council endorses master plans all the time. We don't know the exact cost, the exact delivery sequence and strategies and, and I'm very reluctant to pull a figure. Uh, today because I know, uh, whatever I say will be the figure that everyone remembers, but I also know it will be wrong. Because we are in a market, as you point out, we have significant cost increases. So we, we as officers. Are doing our utmost to make sure we can deliver this in the most efficient and least cost to our rate pays. And now that's going to be my task with our team. Should you endorse this master plan to figure out how we can deliver that the lowest cost to residents. I, I appreciate, I appreciate. I appreciate that this uh is not something that we can have detailed prices about.
Councillor, this is not your opportunity to speak. It's a question time. And if you want to have another question, I ask you to put it forward to the officer through the chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to um, um, officer of Amt. Um, with our previous master plan, we have had indicative amounts attached and we are in this master plan. Removing some of those component parts. Certain councillors are still advocating for their inclusion. Is there a revision of the order of the magnitude of the amount for the community's transparency, just so that we can be clear? Is there a reduction that we anticipate that we would attribute to this? That's what I'm seeking. I understand if councillors aren't asking you for that information.
Councillor.
It's difficult for you.
That question has been answered.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
It has been answered and um. And, and as you have just been told again on the public record, that officer has said that due to the very complex. Environment we have when it comes to cost of projects, they're not prepared to put a price to it until we know what the final product looks like. Because it will change, no doubt, because of the environment that we're currently in.
If I may, just in response to that, for the community's perspective, because of the constrained environment, that's all the more reasonable.
Of order, Madam Mayor.
Councillor, this will be a warning for you in regards to your behaviour in a meeting. I ask you to refrain from that into the future. That.
I had thought we'd entered into debate because we were debating what I.
No councillor, I was chairing the meeting and I was actually making it clear to the community that this question has been answered, not only on the public record, but many, many times before. And just brought, draw your attention to page twenty eight. Um, I'm going to say that, you know, this is unsuitable meeting conduct. And I'll ask you to refrain from continuing to use that type of conduct throughout the rest of this meeting and future meetings.
Which in particular?
Uh, page twenty eight.
Which contact?
One, three point one.
Three point one.
Thank you councillor. You don't need to actually repeat what I say. I will move on to the next question councillor.
I'm just seeking clarification as to what I can't do in.
Councillor, you have standing orders and you've had them for the time you've been in here. I'm moving on to questions councillor Beridge and that will be your second warning in regards to conduct in a meeting.
Thank you.
Councillor Beridge.
Uh, thank you. I've got four questions. So do I ask them one at a time or run the all four off? What, what would you prefer?
I'm happy for, um, are you happy for four at a time or one at a time, Chris?
Okay, four. Okay, great. I'll go as quick as I can. Sewage. It says that we uh may connect to the Victoria Point of Stand Alone. Could you please explain which option is the most likely? That's one.
For the sewage. Can you refer to the um page number you're talking from?
No, I'm sorry, I can't. I've, I've got a lot of notes. Oh, thanks mate. Um, the Blytana report, um, which I do have here, the Blytana report. Uh, said there was significant vegetation, two point four in the Blytana report. Said there were about five hundred trees, which we've all discussed in many cases. Um, that were going to be removed, but that has now changed. Can you tell me what the revised actual number offset required is now, please? So that's two. Number three. The original concept plan had BMX now removed, so why has the revised plan got extra car parks? I couldn't work that one out. And the last one, the plan still has recreation and water play uh for future use. Is voting for this today, could this lock us in for the water play park place? I do have a few others, but I'll let it go. Thank you.
I think some of those may not be relevant, but over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, if it's all right councillor, I'll take that first question. I notice I'm not hundred percent sure of the, the commentary in relation to sewage. But um we would ultimately need to connect this to our network. Um, so whether that ended to Victoria Point or elsewhere in the network, that would be part of the sewer strategy, but it will be connected to the network. Um, not dealt with on site, if that was the core question. In relation to Blytana report, um, probably just to, I think your question is around the tree count, um, as opposed, I think you specifically asked the offsets. Um, we can't determine the offsets at the moment because that's actually part of the EPBC process that will determine. The number and the multiplier because it's actually not about the tree count. Um, if, that my earlier response indicates, it's actually around the grass and the trees and the habitat values. So. And in relation to the tree count though, what I can indicate confirm for you today is that. Um, as best we've been able to determine at the moment, um, based again at a master plan level of. Completion of design, which is not necessarily detailed design, we reasonably believe will be able to save at least a further hundred trees on the site. Um, but we need to work our way through detailed design and maybe more than that as we work our way through. Um, in relation to your third comment around car parking, uh, we have removed quite a bit of car parking from the master plan. Uh, we are providing car parking on the site, which is consistent with the planning scheme. Um, code requirements for the number of car parks playing field, consistent with our planning scheme. We're providing an additional. Significant number of car parks then for recreational and parkland users of the site. So we will be providing uh. More than, I think it's fifty car parks per field, which is the requirement of planning scheme. An additional couple of hundred for the park or recreational components. There's no car parks being provided for BMX. That car park has been removed. Uh, then the last question, um, relation to water play recreation, uh. We have deliberately in the master plan called it future recreation. We haven't tried to design that for you. We believe that that's an opportunity to come back as a part of a more detailed process for those components of the site to determine what those might be. Once we've better delivered the first part of the precinct in the sports fields and council can take consideration of its needs, its budgets at the time. So we think the opportunity is to outline the type of uses may be there. Uh, whether, then that would be a future decision of yourselves as to what you ultimately put into those precincts, whether that was water play or play spaces. Uh, we would reasonably see though, uh, the provision of playground equipment, particularly in relation to the context of the playing fields will occur. Um, I know some councillors are particularly interested in that and we will um ensure that we'll be providing playground equipment in proximity to the playing. Fields, recognising that, you know, older kids playing sport and younger kids then in the playgrounds. So those will definitely occur. But in terms of scale and magnitude of water playing playgrounds, that'll be a future decision that we would bring back to you.
One more question?
No, no, I won't. I just want through the clarity on the questions I've asked, please. Um.
Well, some of those questions with great respect were already answered in previous um responses, but so which.
I, I, I think you misunderstood my second question. The Blytana report had um over five hundred trees being removed. So I'm not talking about the offset. Don't care about that. What is the amount of trees now that we are the number that we are now looking to have?
The officer actually gave you that figure.
Sir councillor.
Do you, are you able to give me that figure?
He did, he gave that to you councillor. So what is the number? Sorry, maybe I missed it. There was a lot of words here.
I probably didn't do the mathematics for you, but indicated we're saving, we believe a hundred less trees will need to be removed, so.
So four hundred?
Four hundred to four hundred and fifty would probably be the range. But again, can I just clarify that that is at a master plan level of detail? Um, and we will need to work our way through both EPBC process to get the final design, then the detailed design. So. Um, it, that may go up or down, um, depending on which way we go. Um, and most of those trees, just for clarity, are in, um. The, the paddock area, um, for those, I guess on, on the screen, that's what we're seeing. Yeah, there's a significant amount of scattered paddock trees through there. So. They're, they're not in, uh, the rear of the site's now going to be retained for offsetting and replanting, which where the significant volumes of trees were. And the reason it's only a hundred less is that we were doing all the cycle paths in and around the trees. Um, so we weren't removing significant amounts in those areas.
So if I can just get another clarity then, so we're only losing a hu- uh, saving a hundred trees in this revised plan. We're losing four hundred. Is that because of the additional car parking?
No, all, all of, that's, no, I don't believe that's correct.
You were just told that there was less car parking councillor. You might want to take it offline so you understand, I think, what the officer was saying, but that, that was answered as well. Are there any further questions? Um, I just wanted to maybe give a quick commentary. This, this is going to have implications um across the whole country frankly. But uh in a city that has been constantly um buying land and revegetating it, um, at the same time being expected to. Uh, have an increasing population, you know, today's next one and the next items here, we're talking about a housing strategy that could potentially. At its ultimate double the population of our city. Um, and the federal government also accepting immigration, um, there is a, an, an expectation by communities that they'll have health and wellbeing opportunities with that growth. Um, and in a place like Redlands, it will become increasingly difficult. If I could use another example. Where congestion from population growth continues to be in the, I guess, top number of reasons why people have concerns about population growth. Um, projects like Wellington Street Panorama, which service our hospital. If uh we had to comply today with what the, the federal government have just changed in their uh assessment of these sorts of matters. I would hate to think the duplicate costs of that, um, that project which gets people to our hospital. That second stage will be, um, and we did get some funding from the federal government, but there's obviously been no, no mention of further funding for those types of projects. In fact, the federal government's talking about cutting funding um to those types of projects. So it is a matter of the balance. Uh, and I think as we're expected by other levels of government to accommodate people, we also have to accommodate their wellbeing. Um, and we don't have too many options left in our city. It also will have potentially have impacts on existing sporting fields. Because they have grassy paddock, grassy paddocks, and when you want to do upgrades or renewals, we may need to jump through another level of assessment, which will. Not only um increase the cost, but the timeframe in which it can be delivered. It's a serious issue. There was a motion to like Government Association of Queensland. Um, conference where at the front of this issue at the moment, might take a little while for us to understand the overall impacts. Um, but in the meantime, um, our ex, the expectation of our community to provide sporting facilities, as you know. Um, is forever increasing. And so unfortunately, um, as has been said by others, that it does mean, um. We, we need to review this master plan and put forward something that has a better chance of being affordable and deliverable. Um, so with that, um, I, I think it's really important that we continue each and every one of us to advocate for balanced outcome. Uh, when it comes to providing for our communities. Um, councillor, now I've got to have to toss up who's going to um sum up. Councillor, um, Bob Larry, you actually moved the motion, so I'm giving you that option to sum up with, with that.
Oh, thank you. Um, councillors, I ask you to keep focus to the need we urgently need to address in our city on the deficit of sporting facilities that we currently have. And since twenty twenty, times have changed. We all know that, both financially and environmentally. Costs have escalated and environmental protection and constraints have um increased. The revised master plan, however, protects at least ten additional hectares of land. Seeing a total of a hundred and thirty hectares of protected natural area. We've had to make some tough decisions to get to this point. And the first decision related to how we could modify the project's footprint to limit the development. And based on our current understanding of participation and growth in sport across Redland City. We decided to prioritise the delivery of sports fields and sporting infrastructure. I'm reading a lot of this out of our actual, our book here. Um, the great news is that the resultant revised coastal regional sport and recreational precinct master plan. Is financially sound plan and it has the best interests of the Redlands close community at heart. That's actually in the book. Financially sound means it will be budgeted through our future capital works. But in my opinion, this master plan is a much more realistic and deliverable. Than uh what we had previously due to those constraints I previously mentioned. I urge councillors to support this revised master plan rather than pausing or going backwards and forwards with the state government. We, federal government, sorry. I blame the state for the, um, the strategy. I blame the feds for this one. Um, rather than pausing or going backwards and forwards with the federal government. Due to the identified need in our community for sporting facility and this need has been identified ever since I got into council fifteen years ago. It's extremely hard for us to find any land in Redlands where we're not going to have some environmental constraints. And, you know, being often accused of being the greenie councillor here. Um, I am happy now with this revised plan and the balance that we are achieving. I'm urging and encouraging councillors to start, let's just start some project for goodness sakes and deliver these fields at least. We can work for another site in future for BMX. We've got to continue advocating for all us. Sorry, I get very ang- frustrated with how long it's taken us because we've got to continue advocating for all our sporting facilities that are needed across our city. But for the time being, let's actually priori- prioritise the delivery at least these sporting fields and the supporting infrastructure. I just want to start. I just want to show our community that we're making some tough decisions. But we are going to start delivering some sporting facilities.
Thank you. Just wanted to one, make one point if I may, um, councillor Bob Larry, is that this is the game of Tetris. And by actually having these facilities at Heinman Road, it will allow other sports to benefit in other parts of the city. It's that. Moving the pieces around. So just, it does actually focus on, it focuses on other sports outside of the ones that are actually allocated.
And another point I probably should have made is, um, you know, we, we're saying about environmental constraints. But I know at Ormiston, when we have koalas running across the fields, that's the highlight of all our visiting teams. So I think we can also make. Um, I, I hate to say it, ma- um, money out of having some koala habitat and that down there with eco tourism and that's mentioned in here too. So there's lots of benefits.
I did sort of step outside and allow you to do. Yes, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Boglari, uh Mitchell, Gole, Hewlett, Edwards, Mackenzie, Hughes, Beridge, Bishop, Williams. Those against councillor Tulty. All right, next item councillors is fifteen point one and I understand. Can I just, my, they've left the room, but I wanted to thank the officers for the work that they've done in that space because it has been very difficult. Pass that on to them, please, Chris. Um move, moving on to um fifteen point one, mover and second up. Well, I'm I'm waiting if we're gonna move the office recommendation or the alternative, moving the office. Are you moving the alternative or are you moving?
No, I'd like to move the alternate uh motion, please. Lucy, could you bring?
Just to be really clear.
I I'm credibly sorry, Madam Chair, my diligent board just died.
So just to, just to be clear for process councillors, um ca- if councillor Gole moves this alternative motion and it is lost, we'll go, we will revert to the original. Just wanted to be clear. Officers are in the room. Um moved by councillor Gole, seconded by councillor Hughes. Over to councillor Gole, your alternative motion.
Stop moving it. Uh thanks, Madam Chair. So I'd like to move this alternative motion, uh listed as option four. Um and it's, please stop moving it. That council resolves to refuse the development application for the material change of use for multiple dwellings comprising twenty eight detached dwellings on land described as lot five, RP one four eight three nine and situated at two eighty nine to three oh one Cleveland Redland Bay Road, Thorlands, two one six four, and that would be based on the following. Um South East Thorlands LM DR one precinct, the proposed development fails to provide a well-designed future urban community that facilitates the establishment of a safe, permeable, legible and functional movement network as contemplated by precinct LM DR one, South East Thorlands, in that the proposed development will prevent the subject site from achieving the road connection through the subject so- site shown on figure six point two point two point three point four. South East Thorlands Road Movement Network. The development does not comply with the following city plan provisions. Could we just scroll up a little bit now, please? Thank you. Um. Performance outcome P uh O zero, sorry, P zero two four of the low medium density residential zone code. Um overall outcomes three alpha, uh two and three of the low medium density residential zone code. And the performance outcome P zero three of the transport servicing access and parking code. And overall outcome two, one of the transport servicing access and parking code. Um if I could just, um, am I allowed to continue? I've got a couple of points here. Awesome. Um so before the the public who are watching this, I was actually asked yesterday, why was I calling this particular motion in? Um and at the beginning of our meeting, the gentleman said it's about enhancing people's lives. The the actual um decisions we make and how they actually impact people's lives. So as the divisional councillor a- and then the appointed advocate on behalf of residents, I'm addressing their concerns. Residents have approached me because it was uh an impact assessable application for this MCU and they submitted submissions and a petition. They weren't happy with what was being proposed. Okay, so that's why I've called it in. There was quite a few social media conversations by residents. Residents asked me to support their petition to council. Residents feel it's impacting their existing homes where potential stormwater damage could take place on the surrounding and existing properties. Um the subject site already has a precedent um of refusal. Now, I know that's under a different planning scheme and it was a different application, but what we're talking here is about the old application from historically previously a couple of years ago was nineteen lots. They're now asking for twenty eight lots potentially if this MCU is granted. Um fauna and flora aspects. Um I I've got court documents here from the last time this came around where it specifically talks about the refusal in itself. And we talk about the flora and fauna aspects where there's casualty da- data alone that has revealed frequent koala crossings on those roads. But it's not just about koalas. It's also about other wildlife species that reside in that area. Because it's on the Thorlands Creek Corridor. Now, there has been some historical uh clearing there and the owner of that property has been sanctioned accordingly. Um council has attempted to purchase this land. Uh the owner wouldn't sell to council. The council was attempting to purchase this land previously and historically because of the lack of viability to develop it. There was no means of actually delivering, delivering the road network in accordance to the South East Thorland Structure Plan. And so council did go in and it's all in, all on these documents, councillors, you all provided it. Um to try and make a purchase and the owner rejected that purchase. When Esperance Estate was being built, uh built, sorry, uh Ozbuild made an offer to that particular landowner and he rejected it as well. So here we are now, we're trying to future proof. Um we're hanging our hats on the hopes that another intersection will be built to free up and manage traffic. Um we haven't met what was originally being planned for that that site, which was to have two left in, left out uh intersections adjoining to each other. That's what's in the mapping for the South East Thorland Structure Plan. Um that would allow the, anything that's built there to have freedom of movement for traffic to get out on Cleveland Redland Bay Road. We're actually expecting to push the traffic back onto a very narrow boulevard, which is Harrington Boulevard. Um there is all manner of issues that realistically, from from an on-ground perspective, not a desktop analysis, an on-ground perspective. Development has already gone underway and where it's so heavily constrained and congested. Honestly, the best outcome for that piece of land would be to ensure that Connie Way is continued through to Cleveland Redland Bay Road and that lots be drastically reduced. If they're going to put any type of housing in there, um it certainly shouldn't be twenty eight lots. It actually should be back closer to the original mark of nineteen lots, if not less. And increase that pedestrian and traffic movement from Harrington Boulevard through onto Waterline Boulevard. Am I running out of time?
You are councillor, yes.
Yeah, I'll try and wrap up very quickly.
Wrap up please.
So page three in some of these reports, it talks about fauna and flora. Uh council officers even at that time, public and council observations note native species in the, in the vicinity. Frequent koala crossings in and around Dinwiddie Drive, Harrington Boulevard have been identified. So we're talking about fauna and fauna here. I've personally seen koalas that have been hit on those roads where residents have lodged them and we've had to clean them up. The subject site, it it already has precinct of a refusal. Yes, it's based on another application. But some of the principles that have been expressed in this document pretty much relate here as well. It might be a different planning scheme, et cetera, but it's.
I've probably given you an extra two minutes, so if you can just quickly get to your last sentence.
Uh I I'll really wrap, I've I've got points upon points upon points councillors, but I won't, I won't lo- uh linger. The fact is, is that the residents have asked us to make decisions that either enhance or mitigate uh issues that will impact them if this goes ahead. So I'm asking that we refuse this uh MCU on the listed planning grounds, uh as provided, they're actual genuine planning grounds, uh and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I might actually ask one officer to present, uh there's some cu- councillors have requested that. Um um I'll get the officers to present first if it's, if that's okay and if it's, and then we'll have a speaker against and go through the normal process if that's all right. Yeah, so I think they're, yeah, you can ask that question councillor if they don't respond.
Good morning. Um so obviously the officer's recommendation is to prove, approve the development application. It's set out obviously the uh assessment of the issues identified in the uh uh agenda item. So in relation to the um the connectivity and the continuation of Connie Way, um I draw councillor's attention to page uh one four two of the officer's report. So in in particular, um the um. Sorry, it's been a minute, second. Sorry, page, page one four four, uh the 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 assessment starts on page one four two of the report and continues on to uh one four, page one four eight. So um as you'll see, figure six point two point two point three point four on page one four four is an extract of the South East Thorlands Road Movement Network. Um circled is the extension of Connie Way, uh which identifies the back-to-back tees, if you like, uh or the left-in, left-out and the continuation of the Collector Road leading from, which is effectively Harrington Boulevard up through Connie Way connecting to that intersection. Um what you'll see in that plan is that there is no uh identification of Harrington Boulevard, which is the uh application it's referred to from the Ozbuild Development Application, which currently has the left-in uh left-out uh arrangement. So um the structure plan obviously is a, is a point in time which is reflected in obviously the uh the the city plan uh as currently shown. Um so what officers considered, um what we considered in consultation with seeking advice from our uh external uh traffic engineer was uh is a benefit in terms of providing that collector street through the development to that intersection uh wh- which is shown in the city plan. Now, the advice is that obviously Harrington Boulevard is constructed and operating, actually provides that left-out, left uh in on to uh Cleveland Redland Bay Road. So there's no utility effectively providing two left-in, left-out connections. So having asked that question, the next question was, well, um city plan also has provisions around providing uh pedestrian uh cycle connection and things like that as well from a permeability and connectivity perspective. So the second question from officers' perspective as well, is that necessary? Is that still required as per the original intent in the city plan? And the answer to that question was yes, uh it is. So um through the course of the development application, we negotiated a pedestrian connectivity to be continued uh through the site connecting Harrington Boulevard to that connection and went beyond to the regional park uh to the north. So um that kind of provides an explanation in terms of the city plan provision. Um there are a number of other issues which presented through the application process. Uh again, a a consideration has been given to uh impacts on fauna, flora, um and significance from conservation perspective. So the wider site area does form part of a corridor with significance. And through consultation with councils, environment teams and other conservation-based teams, um we've uh secured dedication of that land for for future conservation purposes. So overall, uh given that part of the site obviously is zoned for low to medium density residential development, it was considered that there's a significant benefit in terms of protecting that overall uh significance of the, of the site. Um what I would also say is that the development application does incorporate fencing. Uh and again, we've talked about in terms of bushfire protection, but also in terms of fauna protection. So it's actually trying to restrict movement across Cleveland Redland Bay Road of of koalas and other types of creatures. So again, we're obviously trying to limit that uh impact on those species and trying to obviously funnel through the corridor essentially. Um. There was a comment made with regard to the previous appeal process. Um council, um again, just for context, um that was a development application back in twenty seventeen. Um council didn't make a decision on that application. So an appeal was lodged uh for a deemed refusal. So the original application that was submitted, um obviously through that mediation process did change significantly through that process. Um and ultimately, uh I think uh as uh those papers were referred to councillors, um through that mediation process, um councillors uh did secure um uh through that mediation process, the upgrade of that intersection. Uh but council decided to seek further improvements to the development layout. And ultimately, the decision wasn't made on that, on that development application and the appeal was withdrawn. So that opportunity was lost. So I suppose um what I'm trying to say is that, you know, we obviously have to assess any development application or its merits. That particularly against the assessment of the, the, against relevant planning scheme and other relevant considerations too. As I was referring to previously about obviously the changes that have occurred in that area. Um finally, I suppose the final point I would make is quickly with regard to bushfire. Um so uh there has been a bushfire management report submitted with the development application. Um as part of that assessment, uh coun- o- officers are recommending that there's a condition imposed uh for the recommendation of that bushfire assessment to be uh conditioned as part of any approval and that there's the implement, the recommendations are implemented. Part of that is the uh erection of a um uh fence line which assists in the development meeting, the twenty nine uh bail rating. So the layout has been designed to set the uh houses uh and on the asset protection line, which is thirteen metres back from that fence line. Within that area, there will be a managed area within the development site uh under the operation of Body Corporate to maintain that area to ensure that that bush, bush, bushfire rating is met. Um also, council uh will retain access uh from Connie Way into that bushland area uh for conservation purposes and also shouldn't be required. Um we have had some initial discussion or had some discussion with um the resident area within council responsible for maintenance of those areas and their initial response was that providing that they um the twenty nine kilowatt um uh bail rating is maintained, they wouldn't necessarily have to do further works within the bu- within the retained vegetation area. Um and that's essentially what their recommendation of the bushfire report is suggesting. Um so that, yeah, that was the initial response we received. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Just don't go too far, but I'll get speakers against if there are any first, because I know there's some questions. Speaker against councillor Mitchell.
Um yes, I uh thank the officer for those comments. Um in complex area of planning, we can all agree to that. The the whole area has undergone different changes at different points in time and here we are at another. We have refused items in the past, but to councillor Golly's uh no- notice, um or proposed motion, it talks about traffic, it talks about parking, he's raised concerns about livability and wildlife and people movement. It would be nothing short of a disaster to connect Connie Road, Connie Way through um back to, I walked the ground yesterday, I drove Harrington Road and I drove it to Peak Out. Um it's a very pleasant street. Not so wide, not so narrow. I had to pause once for a car coming the other direction and my, my delay was three seconds as I uh traverse the area safely. Over to my riders, I drove along the road, along the full-length footpath, along the whole road. Fantastic, bordering the recreational open space area. And schoolkids were coming home and and another couple of people walking along there and I stopped and had a quick chat. And uh it was a lovely community, built for low speed, built for safety, built for active transport, built for connection uh connectivity. It was a lovely neighbourhood. Um I then stood at the um road end at Connie Way and looked into the land there, which is cleared largely and and has always been intended for a road and thought of those perhaps twenty eight homes and that's plus eight on what's been there before. So we're talking about eight houses, eight dwellings. Now, if we want to keep people safe, if we want to keep wildlife safe, we don't put a road through. A disaster and a road through onto another busy road. Um eight homes, Peak Out, what are we doing? Two, two movements today, sixteen, something like that. How many cars will come through from Boundary Road down Harrington and out onto Cleveland Redland Bay if a road got put through there? That would be a disaster for that small neighbourhood. Quite the opposite to the intent of councillor Golly or his residents to think, I know what we'll do to keep everyone safe, have more cars coming through. That's, it's counter, counterproductive. There will be in the future and we know there will be, um because development is coming, Paddington Parade will get the intersection. There is, uh the structure plan is going to be honoured into the future. But to push through a road, Connie Way onto Cleveland Redland Bay would create exactly the opposite of the livability. And the safety for wildlife and people, so if we want more cars running through, honing, speeding, rat running. Then support this motion, if you want safety, let the structure plan and the ordered planning that we now have at this point in time proceed. Appreciate the intent, but this will achieve exactly the opposite, thank you.
Speaker four. Questions? Councillor Vargari had questions, I'll ask them, and I'll throw you two, Michael, please, um. With this development application as it is now, what is, is it code, is it impact, and if it's impact, what parts are impact? Like, I'm trying to find planning grounds on it that will be sufficient to stand up in court if if such a motion was to get up.
Yeah, 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 sorry, I was just conferring with this officer, yeah, it's it's impact assessable development, so. Um consideration, you know, gets needs to be assessed, it's an entire planning scheme, consideration development matters, obviously, uh. The uh the trigger for assessment is because uh there was a slight cr- encouragement into the recreational open space zone, so that's the reason it's.
So the only part that's impact is the fact that it goes.
Well, the whole, the whole application.
Yeah, but but the planning point.
Trigger, yeah.
Planning trigger.
Yeah.
Is it goes into the recreation.
Correct.
And open space only.
Which we address in the report, yeah.
Not anything to do with the road because that was changed previously.
Well, that's that's not the trigger in the in the planning scheme, the assessment, but we are, as an impact assessable development application, we have to follow the rules in the. In the planning act in terms of assessing those types of applications, so we have to regard to the entire planning scheme and any other relevant matters.
Just trying to see how strong the points were for planning grounds and that's the only one.
Councillor Talty.
Uh yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, just wanted to ask, there are a number of points in the motion that are before us, um. If we could see the motion, please. Uh so these A, B, C, et cetera, um some of them the officers already spoken to, but if we could please just have, we've got two. Considerations before us and we know that the officers have considered all of these points in their original recommendation, so I'm just wondering if we could just. Point back to how they, these points were assessed and how we came to the recommendation by officers and then there were a couple of statements.
Can we, can we just deal with that first, because I think there's a bit of work in that.
Okay, well, it's just a few, yeah, few language.
Yeah, I think um what councillor Talty is asking is how you've addressed with uh the issues of A, B, C, D in your recommendation for. Yeah, yeah.
In office's recommendation, sure, so again, sorry, I'm probably a bit flustered at the start, but page one four two uh is the start of that assessment, so. In that context, we refer to P O twenty four, which requires development to facilitate an establishment of safe, permeable, leachable and functional movement network that is generally in accordance with. That section, so that's a performance outcome, so um what we have considered um is that, you know, obviously we're not providing that. Connection uh to Connie Way, so uh what we then consider obviously is the overall outcome, um because that's the purpose of the code, is supported by the overall outcomes in the code. So specifically for precinct L M D R one, the South East Thornlands, uh item two and three talks about providing transparent networks that coordinated and interconnected to ensure a high level of accessibility. Pedestrian cyclists, public transport, private vehicles and development does not compromise or constrain potential for well-designed future urban communities. So in regards to those two points, but that to those two particular items and the Roman numerals point two and three. Uh we sought advice from our external traffic engineer, uh who was the same traffic uh expert that was acting on behalf of council through the appeal process on the Usher appeal. And they advised that the um South East Thorn and the structure plan requires that left in, left out um in the North East structure plan, that circle that identified, I was referring to on page one four four. Uh and that 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 the back to back tees, what they've also said uh is that. Uh that's hundred and forty metres away from the existing uh Harrington Boulevard with Boulevard, which has been constructed. It has, is is in use, which isn't anticipated or reflected in the structure plan, so I mean essentially, there is a left in, left out already there and operating in a collector street. Why do we need to build another one, so the traffic engineer was of the view that it didn't stack up on that basis. Um they also um considered the requirement to build a four-way signalized intersection, the intersection is raised in the submissions. Uh and again, the view was that for twenty eight dwellings, um basically the impact on the road network in the ten year horizon, it wasn't, it wasn't required either. And and again, if you're working on the basic principle that the structure plan anticipates the traffic lights on Redland, Redland. Um where Cleveland Redland Bay Road at that Pateman Parade intersection, so again, with that view that obviously from the main state-controlled. Corridor, which is a state-controlled road, so it's not council road, a state-controlled road, is obviously trying to limit those stop-start movements essentially along that corridor for the delay and things like that as well, so. That was part of the consideration there, um. Uh again, we specifically asked the question as to whether or not uh this development should proceed in the absence. Of the intersection, the parade, the parade and those traffic lights being implemented, because the con- the condition of the approval for the Usher development is that those traffic lights are provided at the development's cost. Prior to the commencement of the use of stage one of that development, so again, the advice in that particular instance was that twenty eight townhouses. Uh it's obviously the um formula and the mathematics of calculating trip generations based on those those types of things, and again, for twenty eight dwellings based on. The peak movements, which would be about eighteen additional movements at peak, it really has an insignificant impact on the on the road network and it didn't justify. That type of a condition being put on the development, so that was that, that that issue. Uh what else have we referred to, um have we got the, uh yeah, so the the other point that we've referenced in the report is in relation to the safety of the road network. Uh and that particularly is uh P O three, which talks to maintaining or improving safe and efficient operation of the transport network. So again, that gives means giving consideration to the existing planned function of the roads affected and also uh the nature and intensity of the traffic generated by the development, so I'll kind of. Answer that, I think, in in response to the structure planning point, but uh for those reasons, that's why we've recommended approval based on the advice that we've received.
Thank you, can I?
Yes.
So just with regard to um some of the comments in presenting the alternate motion, um. Uh it's been spoken about as as um twenty eight lots, but my understanding is it's a closed uh multiple dwelling community, so it's not in fact. Lots as such, it's a, it's a communal development, so the public generally won't be going through there, I just want to uh confirm that's correct. Um when we're talking about the previously refused application, there was a a lot of. Discussion around the lack of viability and consideration for council to purchase, I'm not aware of any of that and I don't know whether. Council ever looked at purchasing that land, if that was uh, oh, I just don't know, um. That we were hoping for an intersection somewhere, um but the intersections are constructed with the exception of the one on Redland Bay Road, as I understand it. Um the officer referred to the track outside for um land maintenance, I still think if we come to the next motion that that's something we need to add, but that's another point. Um. And the main roads intersection, which is already constructed and already has lights on it that would have formed the four-way intersection that's the the point of contention here. Um I I wonder if the officer could please just speak about the difference between, because if this was a local road and we had a development that had twenty eight. It was, was it reasonable to condition them to do that, we would collect the infrastructure and it would be paid for out of the old chip for that plan to be completed, but. That's not the case with the main roads intersection and I think it's a little bit hollow of main roads to say that they don't want to add any more stops. When the intersection already exists, it's just putting a fourth access point into it.
I'm just conscious that you're giving that officer a lot of questions to.
Yeah, so those are the things I'd like outlined, please, sorry, Michael.
I do, I do my best, I was writing them down, but I'm not sure I've got more, uh first point, uh with regard to the lots, this is a medium density residential development, so it's an M C U, so it's a. Essentially a body corporate controlled townhouse development, so it's not a reconfiguration of a lot, that was the previous proposal, so um. There is, uh as I, as I outlined, a public access through the site, so uh yeah, so that being, this condition is recommended to require an easement to allow public access. Through that pedestrian connection, yeah, correct, not road access, pedestrian access, yeah, um. Uh yeah, so that was that point, uh sorry, we had to remind me, the second point, third point, fourth point.
Uh lack of viability.
Lack of viability, I can answer quickly, um lack of viability, um I mean, that's not a consideration of this, of this development application, we will consider it against the assessment of the planning scheme, obviously, yeah. Third point was.
I'll, I'll leave the intersections because you've spoken to.
Yep.
Quite a bit, um. And uh yeah, with regard to the difference between the state assessing the need for an exit onto that. Four-way intersection, it's currently a three-way intersection, so it already exists, so it just seems a little hollow to say, well, they're not going to add more stops to the main road, there's already a stop on the main road.
Yeah, I mean, uh as I understand that, that, that existing intersection, uh you know, in that structure plan, it doesn't identify it as a traffic. Controlled intersection, a traffic light controlled intersection, uh that was subject to an appeal process, I wasn't party to that and I believe that lights were negotiated as part of that outcome, so. Uh with with the state, so it's a state-controlled road, um the state would be responsible, we consulted the state's current agency referral on this development application. And they've raised no, no, no issue, no concern there.
So if those lights weren't originally intended on that four-way intersection and that was, that's, that side of the four-way intersection was originally a left in, left out. Now that things have changed and we've been through the court and we do have a lit intersection there, is it not a better outcome to drop the left in, left out and have a four-way lit intersection which exists already? Using that infrastructure?
Um well, I think we have to look at the whole network, uh as I alluded to, and you know, the Harrington Boulevard, which is the collector's tree in effect. Is now constructed, so it provides that function, so again, I think the point was made, what, why would you build another road when you've got that functions in that way already? Um and then, I say, the question is then in terms of the Pateman Parade and the signalisation of that intersection. And when that is built, that will provide the ability to turn right into the development and um right out of the development as well, uh as is intended.
Thank you.
Huge thanks, officer, for, it's a very complex site and we're a long way down, uh uh a series of processes that have been frustrated at many points. Transport being a critical one, um I drove the site yesterday and it was very revealing. Connie Way, when we look at, if we could possibly go to s- page one forty eight of the report, which is figure nine. Um Connie Way. Just if the graphic is useful at this point. Moving through the site, so I am getting to the question, but while we're just referring to this page. Moving through the site is very complex and constrained and people do need to cover long distances to get in and out of the site, as proposed here, if we look at the bottom left. Property on Connie Way as proposed, there's a property that's just on that corner, I'm wondering, is there any. Is there any way, I would prefer to see a conditioned outcome that would allow us to solve the issue than an outright refusal if we could, so I'm looking to see if we can find some sort of. Way to, is that block that's on the far left at the south, southwest corner, is there any way that an adjustment there might allow more permeability, more. Transport movement through there in an easier flow, because is that something that we, sorry? I'm talking about that block on the bottom left-hand corner, it's the southwest, well, is, is that not going to allow more flow through there? Because people do move through that whole area, cars.
Fairly wide.
It's a closed townhouse development.
Yeah, I just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm seeking to clarify.
Yeah, can the officer respond to that?
If that would make any difference.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure, I I don't think, personally, my personal opinion, it makes that much difference, it's a townhouse development, you get the access.
Yeah.
Into that development through that kind of private road.
Okay, thank you, yeah, the the second one is, and we have touched on it, but um I know this is a long way from Pateman Parade, but. If there was any way that we could just bring that forward, somehow tie that this to that, because that's ultimately going to create a a much better solution. I I've heard the answer, it doesn't seem that it's possible, just looking for some sort of conditional.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, we have to consider, again, in accordance with the Act about whether, when we put conditions on development approvals, this whether they're reasonable or relevant, um we have to, if we think. Uh it's reasonable to put a condition on the development application to require that upgrade to commence. Uh prior to this, allowing this development, that could have been a condition, well, we did consider that condition, so we went specifically back and asked that question from the technical. Expert who advised council on the appeals and also on this development application to get his traffic advice and his his view based on the traffic generation and the rate. He didn't consider that it was necessary or a reasonable condition in that circuit.
Yeah, I recall you saying that yesterday, thank you, I just thought I'd ask.
Any other questions, councillor Mitchell, sorry.
Um uh yes, three to Michael, I just want to frame this in the context of the whole area along Harrington and there, it's been really, really well designed for low speed. Uh easily accessible from Boundary and Cleveland Redland Bay into this new proposed development within a minute, um and and in the concept of enhancing people's lives and wildlife's life. My question is, internally, the road network, more cars through there would be a disaster, uh the likely speed, can it be. Conditioned to be designed so it is a thirty kilometres an hour rather than default of fifty, or is it under different rules?
I mean, this is an internal private road, so it's not, it's not a public road, it has a, it's a big body corporate control.
So I think for the people living there, so thank you for that answer, and again, I should note before, the easement to allow those pathways through have been created for the active transport. Um all the way through from Redland Bay Road through this private development, which is lovely, and on to Harrington, it's. It's the way you like to design things, you don't need more cars.
Thank you, it was a question, not a comment, councillor Vargari, you've got a.
I've got another question, thank you, Michael, um through the chair. Yeah, I I can remember, I think, voting against a previous application in in years ago, um. Um which changed where the lights and the intersections were going to go and it's eventually got through and this is where we are today with the change. Because now when they come out with a left only. Instead of doing that, if you want to go to Victory Point Shops, I think the fear of the residents is they're going to rat run throughout the rest of the estate. What, and I, I, I also went, we were very busy down there yesterday with us all dropping around, but I didn't note, if I turn left out of here, heading north. Where, where's the easiest or first place I can do a U-turn to get back to the shops, can we somehow make that easier? So it's not as attractive to go the whole way through the estate, is that something we could condition? Because I don't, I un- I understand councillor Golly wanting to. No, but that's what we're trying to stop, because that's where the residents are concerned about the rat running, if you, if you come out of Connie Way and turn right. They're, they're trying to say, um they're trying to stop that rat running, they want people to come out of Connie Way, turn left, but I'm trying to see how quick can they. Is there some sort of road treatment we can do on Redland Bay Road to make it quicker?
Yeah, if I can answer the 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 question, I mean, it's it's twenty eight development, so it's not a significant amount of traffic movement, so it's been added by this development, so I would caveat and, you know, bring reference to that as well. But if you're turning left and heading back towards Cleveland, um. Well, you you can turn right into Waterline Boulevard at the roundabout and come back and go south, or you would go uh out the development. Um you can turn right down Harrington and then left back on to Boundary Road and then down to Victory Point, so, yeah, well, or, yeah. I mean, it it's such a small, twenty eight, twenty eight units really isn't going to be a significant number, if you break twenty eight units at peak, it's, what, I said eighteen movements? And, you know, it's, it's, it's really in traffic terms, probably insignificant in terms of amenity, but also in volume.
Question, councillor Hughes.
Thank you, I think this just shows how passionate we are and supporting our community and getting the the best outcomes. When uh we were speaking before, um Connie Way, so I love the fact that we've got the map, so right at the top of the screen, Connie Way. It's got the footpath going across and the road stops, what's the um. On top of, what's the next development coming through, I think councillor Golly mentioned that that site has just been sold, so is there any uh. Any options of connecting and and that eventually coming through thing? So is there any, uh, any options of connecting and, and that eventually coming through thing? You can see, I, I, I'm just on Google Maps and you can see where the road is looking to, to head up. Connie Way comes through and then I just want to make sure that there's not going to be a connector, thank you.
Uh, yeah, well, the land to the north is, uh, currently zoned as LDR two, I mean, if an application comes forward in the future, we'd obviously have to consider it on its merits at the time. Um, I know that there is the road, um, which heads north through the, uh, internal road, but again, as we discussed previously, I think there's levels, changes or whatever. And then there's obviously the pedestrian footpath which is in between that as well, so, um. Yeah, I mean, I can't constantly, you know, speculate in terms of what may happen in the future on a particular piece of land, but obviously we'd assess that against the planning scheme.
That's what councillor, uh, Boglari, that's where my mind is thinking, we were talking about that. So when we, we look at this development application, as you say, Michael, thank you, on its merits, this is what we're looking at. With the connecting footpath coming back out onto Cleveland Redland Bay Road, but that footpath, if it was to be. Broken and a, and access through that road keep going, we're, we're looking at a lot more traffic coming through. Well, I'm not saying we are, we could be, and that's what you're saying, no.
That's not what's before you today to assess as part of this development application, you need to assess this planning application.
On its merits, yeah. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Councillor Berry, interesting councillor Mackenzie, wow.
My, mine's, thank, thank you, through the chair, mine's very quick. I've heard a lot of comments about Harrington Boulevard being rat-running. In my opinion, I don't see rat-running there, I actually, I, I use Harrington Boulevard. When coming back through Boundary Road and back to council, because it takes a lot of pressure off the roundabout, uh, at Victoria Point. Yeah, so my question, so that's my opinion. My question to you, as an officer, do you believe Harrington Boulevard is rat-running? Or do you see it as a logical taking pressure off Cleveland Redland Bay Road intersection?
Well, our office assessment report is before you, uh, in agenda, we're recommending approval, we consider those matters.
But it doesn't say rat-running or using that, but that seems to be a concern.
The planning scheme doesn't refer to rat-running.
No, correct, I, 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 I know that street very well. I have never considered it rat-running and in fact, if you put your GPS on and you're coming back from Kapalaba. It will take you through this road.
Thank you councillor, councillor Mackenzie.
Um, thank you, I'm through you, um. The previous, oh, the planning scheme where it had that, um, the traffic intersections for Connie Way was two T intersections. So it wasn't a four-way intersection, so it would have still only been. A left-in, left-out anyway. So it's kind of mute to say that Harrington is now going to become a rat-run because there's no way to get down to Vicky Point. Because if it was a left-in, left-out, you would still go back down Harrington, out to Boundary, to the roundabout to go to Vicky Point. Because it, it wasn't a four-way intersection, so you couldn't have gone out to Cleveland Redland Bay Road and turned right to go to Vicky Point. If that, if, because it was two T intersections, you couldn't have turned right anyway.
Well, correct, I, I, yeah, well, I've referred to the, to the diagram, which is a structure plan, which is, I think, one, page, page one forty-two, so that, that's what it's showing, it's showing. A left-in, left-out, two, two back-to-back T intersections effectively, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, that argument. Any more questions?
Can I just make a really broad comment? The number, like, the level of debate and it's important, and I appreciate, I do respect, I do respect the, um, local councillor's right to, you know, support residents in this area. But in a couple of items, we'll be dealing with state government housing strategy. And I'm sure councillor Boglari will concur that many times I have said in this chamber. That we are facing growth whether we like it or not. And the more we push back. On these types of development applications where we're trying to accommodate growth, the more the state's going to insert themselves in taking away our community's, um, opportunity. To shape the future of this city. And I, I, I know we're talking about detail here and it's important, I appreciate and totally respect local residents' views on this. I just wanted to, I guess. Forewarn that no matter what you're going to do, you're looking at the housing strategy now. Where a property in Mount Cotton, where they've got two neighbours, could ultimately be six. It's a consequence of us, I guess, pushing back on development across the city. I'm not saying that's right, wrong or indifferent, I'm just putting that out there as a very broad statement. And where you've got existing infrastructure, as arguably this particular area does, compared to parts of the city that doesn't, that will be exposed to growth. I think we've really got to think, um, take a helicopter view of what happens in this chamber with these types of applications. Once again, no disrespect to the local councillor, representing his, um, residents in the area, no disrespect, um, to the residents having that view. But as a cohort of people who represent the whole city. We have to be really aware of the impacts that each of these individual decisions have on how the state views what we're doing in the light of a housing crisis. And you know that we've been singled out despite the fact that we have plentiful supply. Um, as the state's actually indicated in their own reports, but anyway, I just wanted to make that point and I'm happy to hand back to councillor Golly. Um, without talking about any, um, myself talking about any of the detail, I just wanted that kind of umbrella view of what's happening. More broadly across the whole region, uh, councillor Golly, did you want to sum it?
Uh, very quickly, so, uh, thanks, madam chair, so, um. Again, I just, uh, quickly refer back, this is an MCU. Um, so they're actually seeking a material change of use, um, this is not about what building's going to go there. They're actually seeking to change it in order to possibly put that there, so they could unsell this application to someone else. And we could be assessing something totally different again. The Harrington Boulevard, love the fact that you're all using it to go down there, the residents aren't. As yesterday, they've actually, um, we actually got notification back from officers saying that they will not reduce the speed limit there. They will not put traffic calming in there, despite residents repeatedly asking for support from council. Um, it even went to the federal member, where the federal member was asked to intervene. Um, so whether you call it a collector's street, rat-running, whatever, um, the residents feel unsafe. And then if you look at this particular proposal, it's totally different to what was originally going to be, uh, put there. And what the land was deemed to be viable for. And, and, and I'm not really interested as to whether it's an application from last time or this time, because it's right here. It was, uh, an absolute, um. Everyone, officers' recommendation, which was to refuse the last time, and we all said, oh, eleven zip. We all voted and every single principle that we've discussed today about. Will Peyton and Parade save the day? Will it? Who knows? Because there's going to be another two hundred and fifty townhouses where everyone's trying to get out on Peyton Parade. And that's just been, uh, allocated through the courts for that to be built. So it's not just going to be, oh, twenty-eight movements, because most people move into these sites, two cars, if not three, their boat, their caravan, god knows what else. We are not future-proofing that particular area at all. And every single principle that was used by council officers to refuse. The last application through an appeal is right here, and yet today. It's all hunky-dory, how does that physically work? City plan, documents, whatever, it does not matter. How can you in one aspect from two thousand seventeen say, we are going to refuse the application? With all the principles listed here, and then today turn around with another report and go, oh, it's okay now. Back then it was only nineteen lots, this is twenty-eight lots. How, how does it work? The intersection. It's all here, we spent years negotiating with DTMR to have that fourth leg. Applied to the intersection of Waterline Boulevard, Cleveland Redland Bay Road. Connie Way was supposed to go through, DTMR in principle said, yes, we want that four-way intersection. But they wouldn't put it in writing and they also wouldn't support us in court when this appeal was on. All right, so the state wanted that four-way intersection, so now they're going, hey! We've just had a big win in court, Peyton and Parade will save the day. No, it won't, because there's going to be another two hundred and fifty townhouses as part of that negotiated outcome. That's going to be feeding into that area as well. If we actually reduced the amount of lots that went into this particular development now, based on this MCU. And created the access of that four-way intersection, how hard would it be to close off? Harrington Boulevard at the end to go left-in, left-out. It also talks about the dangerous U-turns that have been conducted. Where people do a U-turn on Cleveland Redland Bay Road to get access into the current left-in, left-out intersection. Instead of pulling up to the current lights and doing a proper legal turn. So they'll either go down to Peyton and Parade now, try to turn right there and then, dare I say it, rat-run back through the suburbs to get to their home. This is not sound planning, I get it, the developer's got his rights to do whatever, I get it. The officers have followed the legal process as they are required to do. But the reality on the ground is, we will not enhance residents' lives and we will be also impacting that corridor. I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you councillors, but can I now just take the vote on, um, ca-? No councillor, it's, it's.
I just want clarity on the vote.
We haven't taken it yet.
So, so, so this, give me, give me a chance, give me a chance, I'm just making it clear to you before.
Good, thanks.
So this is councillor Golly's alternative motion to refuse the application. Based on the four points of it, that's just to be clear, so everyone knows, should have been following the debate, so. Um, so with that, um. I mean, nothing, nothing's changed. So I made that clear earlier, if this goes down, we'll go back, we'll revert to the original officer's recommendation. Yeah, well, I made that point right at the very beginning of this discussion. So I put the motion those in favour. Those against. Those in favour. Uh, we have councillor Golly, Hewlett and Hughes, those against, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Berry, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, that is lost. Can I now ask that we have a mover and seconder for the officer's recommendation, I don't know that we need a lot more debate. And you might, you might want to add, I think there were discussions about adding an amendment, but I just get the move first, move councillor Mitchell seconded, councillor Edwards. Oh, well, there was someone that flagged, they might have wanted to, I'm just opening that option up, um, I don't think we need any more debate, but if someone is. If there was someone that talked about adding a condition to the, uh, o- officer's recommendation, can I just? Yes. Well, if, if councillor, if councillor Talty would like to amend the motion, I'm giving her that option now based on what I heard in the previous debate, that she may not want to. And, and which case then, um, if there's no speakers or, like, for or against, we can just take, take the vote. Councillor Talty, did you want to add a motion, uh, add a amendment?
I would like a quick consideration of it, madam mayor, I know that, uh.
So I, I probably needed to move.
I've just been locked out of diligence, so I'll just swing it.
Oh, okay.
So the, the discussion that I had with officers with regard to the, um, fireproof fencing, which is a aluminium. Coated fence that runs along the western boundary of the development, allows that inside that fence. The, um, development as a, a townhouse development will maintain a, a buffer which includes their visitors' car parks and so forth. Which is a distance from the bushland to the eaves of the units for a fire break.
I really need you to give me an, um, a second first.
So I would like to just amend the motion with one additional condition. That on the western side, the outside of the firebreak fence, the developers, where, before they donate that land. Will be required to extend the, um, access for maintenance of the bushland. Uh, from Connie Way along the western boundary of the fire fence to a width of four metres.
Well, I did look at it and it does appear to fit.
Can I just get some quick? Can't get into.
Before, before I move. Also ask about filling in that wetland, because when I asked that, I got told no.
Well, I'm, I'm not asking to fill in the wetland at all. So that's, that's an amendment, but we haven't actually got the words correct yet, so I just wanted to make sure officers were comfortable with the words. Amendment attachment three. Michael?
Uh, sorry, I just clarified, so, um, what you're suggesting is the, um, a four-metre cleared area within the, on the bushland side along that boundary fence, is that what it's?
Yes, if it doesn't fit between the fence and the creek, which I seriously doubt, I think it does fit there. Um, then there will need to be some kind of access for officers to maintain that bushland for weed management. For, um, future fuel reduction operations, et cetera. Um, I know you responded to it and you said that, uh, officers said they didn't necessarily need it. But I know from experience that if it's there, it will make life easier for everyone.
No issues with that, Michael?
Uh, y- yeah, well, I, I mean, the advice I've received, as, as you said correctly from City Ops, was that, uh, as long as the twenty-nine barrel rating and the distance is required, it can be managed within the site. They don't necessarily require it, so on that basis, my advice would be that it's not necessary to condition it, but if that's your.
See, and that, that's the proposed amendment, so, um. Pardon, I, I need to get a second to first.
Yep. Um, it says extend access, um, to what extent, is that like three metres, ten metres?
You said four metres.
There's no.
The length is a fire fence on the western bound.
But to what width though?
Well, I said four metres.
So you want to clear four more?
No, it's already cleared, I, I believe.
It's, um, it's a low access for a vehicle, obviously, so.
It's no different to any of our other fire trails in any of our other areas. We, we always have a fire break on the outside of private property. To allow our officers to get in there and do maintenance and weed management and fuel reduction operations.
Just bearing.
I'm not suggesting any public thoroughfare, they're just saying that we can get access to that bushland off that little entrance from Connie Way. I'm saying that's fine, but like we always do, we would have, uh, one of our little post and rail gates.
Voting this right yet. We actually need to get a second to the motion, so, um, I. Seconded councillor Mackenzie, now we're voting on the amendment first, councillor, that would be adding that element as amended. To the motion, um, councillor Talty, would you like to speak to it further or, I think you've explained what you're after?
Uh, uh, no, yeah, I don't need to speak to any further.
Uh, the amended amendment? Speaker against, no, ma- question?
Just, I'm just concerned that, um, I appreciate. Is there any way of ground-truthing this before we make the decision? Uh, that's the question, because it's come up very quickly in the discussion, um, and I.
Then it'll be an automatic approval, I think, no, it's not. Can I, can I just suggest that we maybe take out a reference to, um, four metres and say adequate, um. Ade- adequate access for fire, fire and ma- manage, management?
Yeah, just access trail to be negotiated, uh, it, you know, fit it where it fits.
Adequate access for maintenance of bushland and Connie, and Connie, from Connie Way, yeah, are we happy? Is everyone more comfortable with that? Just not, thanks, yeah.
Can I, can I move an alternate motion then?
We're not there yet councillor, so we're not, we're. We've just got to deal with this amendment. So you're happy with that councillor, so this is a vote for the amend, the amendment to the officer's recommendation. Can I just have a show of hands? That's.
Madam mayor, just to point clarity head on.
At the moment, the access finishes at the edge of the paving on, on Connie Way. I'm saying extend the access, the length of the fire, just like any other fire trail that we would have in any other bushland across Redlands that we have to maintain.
Here we are. Councillors, through the chair, thank you.
Actually.
I think we are, yeah. An officer? Can I, can I, we have taken a vote and it was carried on that amendment. I need to, I, I do need to count the support of that vote, those in favour again, thank you. Um, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams, those against. Councillor Boglari, councillor Golly, councillor Berry, councillor Bishop, so the amendment is now forming part of that recommendation, the motion. Um, now councillor, um, Golly, you actually, you actually flagged another amendment, not an alternative amendment.
I was going to, um. move motion to, uh, leave this lay on the table until we actually go and walk it and ground through it.
So that's a procedural motion that it lay on the table. I'll take a vote on that, councillors, if you're happy for it to lay on the table, those in favour? Yeah, we should have had this all sorted last week. Those against? That is lost. Let me, those for, um, the procedural motion to let it lie on table, those councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Talty, councillor Beridge, those against councillor, oh, sorry, did you have your hand up? Yeah. No, councillor, I've just taken the vote.
The impact though of that, if we do that.
I've just ta- I've just taken-
Is it a deemed refusal?
I have just taken the vote, I'm told, officers, it's not a deemed refusal, a deemed approval. Those who support-
Point of order on-
Councillor, I'm taking a vote. I've ta- I've already ta- I have just taken a vote on, on the laying on the table and it was lost.
Counted, but I had my hand up.
Correct, and I'm getting back to that, thank you. Those who support it laying on the table, please raise your hands once again. Thank you councillor Bog, it's, it's lost, it's lost. Those in favour of it laying on the table is councillor Boglari, councillor Gole, councillor Talty, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, those against councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams. So that motion is lost. And now we come back to the amended motion, which now technically belongs to councillor Talty.
Uh, oh, move, it is written, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is that right? Can I just double check? It was five, five, it was fi- five, five, six it was, yeah. Do you need to go to? It'll be, it'll be very clear whenever one watches our faces on the online video that we in administration, that it was lost. Just to be clear, do you need those names again? For sure, okay. All good. Okay, so now we have the amended motion, which includes, um, the attachment three changing, um. It's now councillor Talty's motion. Do it, do you need to speak to it any further, councillor Talty?
Nothing, you made it.
I'll just give anyone a, a question.
Um, through you to the officers, can I please ask, um, for the protection of those waterways? Um, it's my concern now, because I was previously told with the development as it stands now, they would not, they would not be filled in. I, I want to ensure that that's the case, please.
I don't know if this is relevant.
Well, the waterways on the western side of the property, I got told, we're not going to be touched by this development. And now somebody has said, yes, they are going to be filled in, so I want to make sure.
No one's, no one has said that.
Yeah, someone, yeah, it was-
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
So I'm asking clarity.
We already have a vote that's, um, ready to be taken, that question of, officers, of officers in regards to that, which not really, I, 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 it's a question, will the waterways be filled in? Um-
No.
Thank you. Uh, that, that is the quickest response I've had from a planner in a long time, thank you so much. It's appreciated. There we are. Forum, that was all, and I wanted to make it clear, I didn't hear that. Yes, and we had a question and- Correct, and councillor Talty said that she didn't need to speak to it any further. So therefore we can go to the vote. We've had plenty of debate, um, on the alternative and it's nothing, nothing changes from that. So I've put the motion, those in favour, those against, those in favour councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams. Thank you councillors. And councillor Gole against, sorry councillor Gole. Off you go. I have the next item, which is fifteen point two, move and second to councillor Mackenzie, seconded councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to it councillor Mackenzie? Yeah, you'll have to.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, just briefly, and I've probably then deferred to council officers to speak to it. Um, officers, this is in relation to the draft Redlands housing strategy that the state government, I really want to emphasise that it is the state government, um, that is drafting this housing strategy, not council, um. We seem to be the guinea pig for how the state is going to accommodate a population growth in South East Queensland. And despite the fact that Redland City Council was meeting, uh, housing and population targets as set by the South East Queensland Regional Plan, um, the state has taken over our housing strategy to determine how we will accommodate an even greater population. And although some of the aspects of that housing strategy seem sound in that you create higher densities around, um, current infrastructure, whether they be shops, schools, public transport, um, other aspects of this strategy are a cause of great concern and the impacts to, um, infrastructure that the state has yet to upgrade, including, um, our major corridors coming in and out of our city. And plus accom- um, accommodating employment opportunities for our residents as well. We already have sixty percent of our population, of our working force, leave the city each and every day to find work outside of the city. And an area that we had determined would be for employment opportunities sets, is now set to become housing. But I would like council officers, if they can, to present on this item to go through, um, the submission that we are making on this strategy, thank you.
Who drew the short straw? Dean, welcome back. All right, councillor, so we'll get officers just to go through, um, for the public record as well, um, our submission back to the state.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks for your question, councillor. Um, so I'm going to refer to attachment one, uh, the general comments that appear. So this provides a high-level overview of the general comments we're making in, uh, regard to the draft Redlands housing strategy. I'll paraphrase fr- from these, recognising, um, yeah, that contents are unable to be digested if you read, risk to read through further. So at a hi- at a higher level, um, there is, officers in principle support, um, increased densities in proximity to centres. Um, and, um, there's general planning matter in this approach because these locations are generally well serviced by public transport, um, have access to job services, facilities and lifestyle opportunities. So at a high level, we support a number of the proposals, however, some of the proposals as they appear in the strategy, um, appear poorly thought through. And the specific one that I would cite would be, um, action six, um, uh, where it talks about supporting lot sizes down to two hundred metres squared across the L D R zone where, um, our lots are six hundred metres squared or greater. Um, a second point that we would make is that in implementing the requisite actions of the draft Redlands housing strategy, um, the state government needs to come to the party and stand alongside us to assist in, um, rolling out the delivery um, of those actions. Um, and it also needs to, um, I guess, share an equitable burden of executing those actions. And one of the key actions which we're seeking the state to undertake is to commit to an urgent review of the Queensland Development Code, um, to establish specific provisions that relate to smaller and micro lots, as these are, um, I guess, a key component envisioned in the draft R H S. Um, the timeframe set for completing the he- for, um, for doing consultation and the housing strategy was quite limited and in, when combined with the fact that supporting information such as mapping was not made available by the state government, we believe that has limited the community's understanding of the scale and implication of the proposed changes. Um, the implementation plan has currently proposed lax cohesion, we believe, um, there's further work required to ensure that the actions aren't serving at cross purposes with one another. And furthermore, that there's a logical sequence to the actions. Um, we believe, uh, as officers, we believe some of the actions as proposed are inconsistent with the state's intention to deliver gentle density, which the state refers to as the gradual incremental approach to development that avoids, avoids abrupt changes in scale, density or character. Just the next line, uh, of course, harking back to the infrastructure, um, matters which were alluded to earlier. Um, we believe there's a significant disconnect between what is proposed, um, in the regional plan and also in the draft Redlands housing strategy and what is proposed to be delivered through the South East Queensland in- infrastructure supplement, which is a precursor for the South East Queensland infrastructure plan. Put simply, we do not believe there's a, um, a coordinated delivery of, um, infrastructure to support the growth that's envisioned in the draft housing strategy. And we articulate, um, in attachment one again, um, some of the key, um, infrastructure components which we believe should be delivered to support growth in the city. Um, with the way that the actions are proposed and the inability for officers to understand how, um, take up of those development opportunities might occur over time, uh, as well as the geographical distribution, it makes infrastructure servicing, planning and delivery quite problematic, so we believe further thought is required there. And, um, because if, if appropriate thought isn't assigned to that component, it could undermine council's long-term financial su- sustainability. And in line with that, um, we're si- we're requesting that the state government commit to an urgent review of the regulated infrastructure charges regime. Because, um, as a number of L G As have articulated to the state government, um, there's already an inab- inability to achieve full cost recovery, um, for infrastructure. Um, some of these changes could potentially impose additional cost burdens on council. And we think a more equitable, um, infrastructure charging framework needs to be established to support future growth. We s- we support, um, and recognise the state government's commitment to undertaking a review of the capacity of the Southern Moreton Bay Islands to accommodate additional housing. However, we believe that it's paramount that the state government commits to working in partnership with council, um, to undertake the review and to fund any requisite actions emanating from the investigations. Uh, final two points, um, while the draft Redlands housing strategy refers to, um, facilitating delivery of an expedited planning scheme amendment process, we know based on current experiences that, um, a lot of the amendments which we have that are currently in train with the state government have taken, in some instance, a number of years to progress. So we believe further thought needs to be applied as to how that's practically executed. Um, the final point is that, um, attachment two, uh, which is council's housing supply statement, um, articulates how council intends to accommodate the dwelling supply targets for the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-six timeframes. And that's it.
I'm, I'm just debating whether we, um, we basically go into questions straight away, speaker, a speaker. You're sure?
Yeah, I'd just like to flag an amendment, uh, if I may, which I did send to councillors, um, and I've had discussion with Madam Mayor and also officers.
And I did actually ask for a slight amendment to the last sentence.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that, but I'd just like to just flag that for councillors, um.
Well, firstly, he's going to move the, an, an amendment to the proposed motion.
I would like to.
Well.
Well, I'd like to propose.
So councillors, that's the, the amended motion, that's being, um, just those two, two points.
Can I speak to that?
Well, not yet, you can't, because I haven't, um, you haven't got a second yet, so, um.
Acknowledging it may need some word smithing, but I, but the intent, I can speak to the intent.
Well, I need to get a second or first councillor. Is there a second, is there a second to that? Councillor Boglari, okay, you can speak to the, in, only to the amendment councillor, that's what you're adding to the, uh, to the motion.
Yeah, and in speaking to, to the amendment,
I need number three.
That, the situation that we're in with the state government having, um, effectively, uh, in, written, um, and consulted with some of the community of Redland City for provision of a draft housing strategy, I should, it should say draft housing strategy as well. Um, so that should be the amendment. Um, the situation that we find ourselves in is that this is, um, uh, it's a far cry from the normal planning process, um, to be adding such a critical potential change to so many lots across the entire city that to do it as a, uh, almost the final act of what is, what the state is suggesting is not attached to our housing, uh, to our city plan, we should take this opportunity to request the state government pause their draft housing strategy, look at the work that they've proposed, look at the officer's recommendations in response, and then commit to a revision of our city plan with community consultation at each stage of that process so that we can do what the state is suggesting, it's actually in relation to trust. The state is saying they don't trust that we've got our planning parameters right. If we go back, talk with the community, who are the state's community and their council's community, and if we ask them as we go into the statement of proposals at the initial stage, and then if, before we do the draft of the planning scheme, if we look at integrating these potential concerns that have been raised by the state and in response by officers, cross-check them, underpin it with the sorts of studies that would include but not are limited to a revised transport strategy, a revised population estimation that is checked, because they're suggesting an extra fifty thousand come. We're questioning that. If we go and get these studies right, if we do our centres review, how many times is that resonating to create out-of-sequence development? And the potential for centres to be contested and development change within four hundred or eight hundred metres of those centres, when we haven't got strategy aligned ourselves, opens us up to the opposite of the State Planning Act expectation, which is to facilitate ecological sustainability in sequence with orderly planning statutory provisions. What I'm asking is that we actually go back, commit to the state to say we will consult with our community. We will do that and give due diligence, we will do all of the studies necessary. We will integrate things like environment, we'll even look at things like heritage, we'll look at centres, we'll look at the sorts of things that are important to the community, and I'll refer actually to the state planning, um, to the draft strategy, it says, the draft st- strategy responds in five, four point five, how does this strategy, how is it responding to community concerns? It says, the draft strategy responds to the issues raised by the community by considering bold targeted actions that can facilitate the achievement of greater housing, um, supply and diversity. It recognizes that housing stresses and blah, 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 blah. Um, and that is, sorry, that's the other. A small section, it says, sorry, under four point two, long-term vision. A small section of respondents and stakeholders perceive that the current level of growth are not sustainable. That's what we're saying, that's what the community have told the state. And they consider growth pressures being experienced in Redlands as indicative of the failures of public policies. Let's go back and get it right with this new city plan. Um, and then they can continue on saying that the community have said consideration of housing supply and diversity concurrently with employment, environmental protection and preservation of agricultural land would be signs of success for community stakeholders. I'm suggesting, let's go back, let's take what's been done, let's acknowledge this is a draft housing strategy, and let's integrate the bits into a properly orderly sequenced, thoroughly researched and appropriately consulted revision of our, of our, of our city plan. And let's do that, effectively it will be the next council that would do it. But let's bring forward and in a manner that's not going to put our officers under increased stress. We've already got the South East Queensland Regional Plan proposing big changes, two point one six, six million extra people to South East Queensland, fifty thousand to this city. We've got challenges on our islands, we've got native title, we've got E P B C, we've got an Olympics with a venue that's not-
Point of order, Madam Mayor, we've really exceeded time and we've gone way outside of the-
Well, I think these are all relevant things because we have-
Councillor, you often think the whole world's relevant.
Councillor, it is a point of order, you are talking to your amendment, and I ask you now to, you've probably, um, pretty much covered more than what the amendment is saying, and I think it's probably an opportunity for someone who may want to speak against it. Um, so if I, if I may, uh, we have speakers against the amendment. Councillor Mitchell.
Happy to word smith it.
Uh, yes, I'll speak against, I'm against because, uh, while the concerns of the councillor are largely the concerns of all of us, um, and indeed our response to the state and this is a draft plan. And I'm hoping our state, our community has made that very clear to the state in the consultation. My concern with the amendment is it puts the onus back on council and council officers. And that shouldn't be the case. If the amendment said, sure, pause state, but they lead it alongside and truly alongside us, that's fine. But to put it back on council, to put it back on our resources, our officers and us, and it's not our strategy, that's what I object to here. Love the intent, but if it could be, we call on the state to pause and do more with council, but they lead, I could maybe support that. I'd be happy to integrate an element of that.
Yep, I love it when we word smith on the floor of chambers. Yep, I love it when we wordsmith on the floor of chambers. Not, um well, I'm going, if I can maybe try to capture the the chase a little bit so that we can, if if councillor indulge me firstly. Um ref- re- re- just wanted to, there's already some suggested changes, wordsmithing here, so I just want to get that right. Um so my.
Maybe as the mover of the amendment, maybe through the flow of the debate, um we can get some consensus on whether there should be some changes.
Well, I've already heard that there should be some changes. Councillors, I'm going to, like, I'm really frustrated because we've had this workshop at um significant times, and we are now wordsmithing it on the floor where we had that opportunity for us to get the words right just this week. Um so I'm going to suggest that I'm I'm more than happy with the intent of requesting the state to pause draft housing strategy. Um and I think that that in itself is enough. Um and then I also would like to also reflect the fact that I've already written to the deputy premier based on the comments in this room on Monday um to actually re- re- uh restart uh more broader community consultation with mapping so people understand what's happening in their street. So I'd like that added to it as well. Um the council does commit to involve the community at each stage of the planning scheme review process. It happened last time, we had eleven weeks if I recall, um and that's, that is the process. So getting back in the, in line with the process. So that that would be my suggestion, stop it at strategy, um and then pa- potentially just change three to um note that the de- deputy premier has been requested to restart consultation and um and provide more information, including mapping.
Do you want to respond to that?
I'm going to ask, um I'm going to ask that we suspend our meeting for five minutes to get this right. So let me repeat that. I'm going to ask um that we suspend this meeting for five minutes to get the wording right because this is too important for us to be, to be wordsmithing on the floor after hours and hours of workshops on this.
And and it's important to our community.
And it's important that we should have had this ready to go before this morning. So if I can ask for a suspension for five minutes, so um move councillor Mitchell, second and councillor Edwards, um those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against councillor Talty.
Procedural motion, I think you didn't need it.
Oh, you're probably right. My apologies. Um if I could just now ask that that we clear the public gallery so that we can and turn the video off so that you can all get this right.
We will need to bring up the original amendment. And I, and I will ask councillors to vote on that amendment, if I may. Yeah. I think you already did speak to it before. No. Councillors, thanks councillor Talty. I'm going to ask that we put this motion, the amendment, so that we can move on with the debate. Those in favour of the amendment, could you please raise your hand? This one, this is, this is the original. This is the, this is the original, which has since. So this is the original motion that councillor Bishop put up. We've since actually talked about amending it to making it more streamlined. Those in favour of the amendment? Okay, those against? Those in favour are councillor Boglari, councillor Hewlett, councillor Beridge and councillor Bishop. Those against? Councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Williams. It brings us back to the original motion. You have another amendment you'd like to move councillor Boglari.
Yes, thank you, with that previous wording that was given.
Moved by councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Hughes. Those in, would you like to speak to it?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think this sends this message to the state government that we're not happy with the way that this is progressing. I don't think there's anyone in this room that totally agrees with everything in the submission either, because there's so many points. It's very hard to get our head around. And we've put the extra point in there to request the state government to pause the draft housing strategy, extend community consultation, because recently when our officers did a fabulous job putting up the maps and I put some on Facebook, I was inundated with people who were shocked with the impact this is going to have. And that's why we are asking that they actually put out maps to inform our community of this impact, which could, it would have overly doubled what we are expecting for our population if all of it was taken up. And I'd also just like to mention how the officers have just spoken to us about this process. Once the draft housing strategy finally gets to a point, they have to then go through a process of putting it into our city plan. To put it into our city plan, it has to go through a normal city plan process, which will include going back out to community consultation. So if we have our community educated by then, we'll be able to put in submissions and everything against any point that the city, that the state government's trying to impose on us into our city plan. So there will be, regardless, if we don't get this now or not, there will be further down the track, a chance for our community to speak, that is my understanding.
Correct. Speaker against? Question councillor Bishop?
Madam, they're through you two officers. It's a question that when.
On the amendment, obviously.
On the amendment. So this is a draft housing strategy. At a certain point, it will become a housing strategy. And there is some time between now and then. The question relates to how this, when it does become a new document that will create new planning law in our city. The question is, when we go to do our city plan, previously, we only did the statutory consultation phase. We did it for double the amount of time, but we didn't do it during the statement of proposals and we didn't do it during the draft.
Councillor, that's not related, that's not, that's not related to this item.
But I think it, I think it's.
You can raise it in another forum, that it's not related to this item. You're asking a question of a completely different process.
So can I ask the question to officers? How long would this process likely take and how would it align with our city plan? In terms of timing, normal timeframes or?
It's up to the state.
Sorry councillor, which, which process? So if, if, if we request the state government pause the draft housing strategy, at what point would this become a strategy that would then be integrated and become planning law in Redland City? Does it go from a draft strategy to a completed strategy? And do we get another review? The community get another review?
Well, that's a matter for the state. So the state are consulting at the moment on the draft strategy. You are considering whether to make a submission on that strategy. You're also, if this motion becomes a resolution, asking for the state to pause that and to reconvene some community consultation. They're all decision for the state, we don't know what the timing might be on that. If the, if the strategy was adopted as currently proposed with the actions in there, then the next step in the process would be to undertake a number of city plan amendments. And that will take quite some time to actually go through the process and would include community consultation. That community consultation on a major amendment would be thirty business days. And that's the statutory process. But overall, it's, we can't say exactly how long that process would be, because it's contingent upon the state and what they do in terms of their decision making.
Yeah.
And, and the attachment also refers to the short, medium and long term plans that they have for the various elements.
Yeah, because of the size and scale of what is proposed by this, tying it to the city plan is the thing that I think is really.
Sorry, we're now voting on the amendment. So if I might, councillors, ask those who support the amendment to the motion, those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So now we resolve to the amended motion and councillor Boglari now owns that motion, because she's moved the amendment. Is there anything further you need to say, I think that's already been said councillor?
No, other than I just feel that we have to send a strong message. And even though, like I said, there's parts of the submission even I don't agree with, at this stage, it's what we've got. And we have to have community consultation. And that will happen at that later stage.
Any speakers against? Oh, pardon me. We voted on the amendment, no, but now it's a live motion, so you're speaking to the. I think I. Any speakers against? Councillors, boy, have you been here very long all work? That we know, we took a vote on the amendment. Okay, and then, then that becomes part of the, the, the total motion. And now we are talking to and against the motion, and councillor Boglari just spoke for the motion. And I'm asking if there's anyone that would like to speak against the motion. And I think we've asked lots of questions, if there are any more questions, would people like to ask those questions? Councillor Talty, you have a question?
I do, just to uh clarify something that was said earlier about estimated housing numbers in reference to uh south, uh southeast Thornlands, the area between Mount Cot Road and Springacre Road. Um, my understanding of our position having not changed is that we understand the state may intend to make this a um ministerial designation, um PDA, uh but our position has not changed, we are not supporting that. We are saying that our original proposal for rural living in that area and the, and the MIBA stands, yes?
That is council's current position. Uh, and it's been reiterated many times and has been the position of this council since I have been elected in two thousand and four, that that is an area that should be designated for job creation. Um, and the state have got that plan, um and got our responses to that, so that hasn't changed. And I'm looking at officers and they're nodding at me and smiling and saying, get on with it, meh. Okay, thank you. Answered, thank you. Okay, all right, so if there's no further discussion, I think um lots of comment. Question?
Apologies, but it is an important question. As officers are in touch and discussions with state officers, has there been any progression on any infrastructure provision that may complement the housing strategy? Because wherever area of our city we're talking about, the infrastructure deficit is actually the key thing. So has there been any further discussions on linking the two uh from an officer's awareness?
Uh, thanks councillor Mitchell. So there have been further discussions on um SEQUIS, so that's the southeast Queensland infrastructure supplement. And consequently, the southeast Queensland infrastructure um plan. Those discussions have occurred through the local government working group meetings. Um, however, um in council submission on the draft shaping SEQ, it articulated that um to support the growth um envisioned in the plan, um commitments would need to be made to upgrade the requisite networks and a list of infrastructure items were um outlined there relating to uh roads, public transport assets, schools, hospitals and the like. In the submission that was made, um we, we uh in, in a table listed out the infrastructure items that were currently listed in SEQUIS and we said, we do not believe that's sufficient to support um future growth. And one of the key, for example, examples that we highlighted as a deficiency was that we have a population of a hundred and sixty five thousand people, we're anticipated to grow by fifty thousand people, and there is not one dollar assigned in that strategy to upgrade the state road network. So when you ask, have we had discussions? Yes. Has the state been forthcoming in adding additional items to SEQUIS and SEQUIP to support the growth in the strategy? The answer is no.
And that's prior to the housing strategy having an impact in, uh more broadly than just what's been proposed in the shape, draft shaping SEQ.
Yeah, that's correct, madam mayor. So um those um comments were made in regard to the growth envisioned through the regional plan. The draft housing strategy is obviously proposing significant additional capacity across the city, which in officer's view would further reiterate the importance or the need to um identify additional infrastructure in SEQUIS and SEQUIP to support that growth.
Thank you. Another question? Yes, I'm sorry to do that to you, madam mayor. I have a radio interview to talk about this at two o'clock. Okay, so I'm just, no pressure.
Well, I just, I just wanted to uh ask if, if the officer could um reiterate probably for the, those playing along at home. The view of the state in regard to the possible four thousand dwellings that may come into Simbi, because we know Simbi is a very significant issue uh for infrastructure provision. Um, and the way that that has more or less been, I guess, unanswered or, or left mute in relation to the number of dwellings that are being suggested for the mainland of Redland. I note that there was a, a poll in the main query mail newspaper this morning, asking what people think about this housing strategy. And ninety one percent were against it. Ninety one, thank you, count, thank you.
Sorry, thank you councillor. So this refers to um commentary or officer commentary that appears against action twelve in attachment uh one. Uh, so that's in my document here, page twenty seven. Um, so the first point to make is that the comment or the action and the background supporting information relating to southern Moreton Bay Islands is a little ambiguous. Um, when we read the, this information, um we originally got the impression that the state government's view that was that this southern Moreton Bay Islands shouldn't be relied upon, um or the dwelling capacity that exists on the southern Moreton Bay Islands shouldn't be relied upon in the future and that additional, and that sort of provided a justification for providing additional capacity on the mainland through some of the proposed reforms, so that a higher quantum of growth would occur on the mainland relative um to the islands. But practically speaking, um there are six and a half, something like six and a half thousand lots on the island that are vacant and capable of uh um accommodating a dwelling house. Um, through the state government's planning or the housing supply analysis in the background report, they've indicated that approximately sixteen hundred dwellings will be delivered in the SMBIs for the period twenty twenty one to twenty forty six. And that gives you an annual growth rate of sixty four dwellings per year. But when we look back at what has actually occurred um uh through a land supply insight analysis, so that is an attachment three to the council report, over the last five, uh five or six years, we've had a thousand and forty seven dwellings delivered on the islands, which reflects a growth rate of a hundred and seventy four houses per annum. So what, what does that mean? The state's planning for sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred dwellings on the islands for the twenty five year period to twenty forty six. If current trends continue and looking at the latent capacity that exists, you're more likely to get four thousand new dwellings appearing on the islands over that period, unless some serious intervention is made to limit that dwelling growth. So it's, it's a little unclear what the state actually is intending to do, but we do support in principle the proposal to examine um the suitability of dwelling growth on the island and potentially exploring options which might rationalize um how future development is realized there.
Any more questions? Councillor Bishop?
I think the state will probably want more information in our reference to include more information and mapping.
I'm sure our officers can uh make sure that their planning officers are aware and, and that is to do with indicative of figures and the mapping will help provide that.
Yeah, maybe that's to do with all of the appendices and attachments.
So councillors, um a really important um decision here today that's not only going to impact our city, because I think you're all in the room with me. Um, we had the state planners come out here and present to us. And I asked the question about this being the blueprint for the rest of the region. And the answer was that they believe that this would be the blueprint for the rest of the region. Um, and if you look at what I think councillor Bishop talked about population growth figures earlier, um we're taking one for the team here by fighting back um on a very different approach to um how communities are shaped into the future. Um, arguably, this is, over my time, I've seen quite a um, a quite a number of moves made by the state where in fact they have a lot more control over what our communities look like than our community understands and that we, that we actually would approve of. Um, so it's really important today that we send this message that our communities both here in Redlands um and in southeast Queensland not only um have a better say in what the community looks like, but as they change it, that they actually invest in those changes and infrastructure is ev- on everyone's lips when we talk about growth. Um, and unfortunately, um you know, some of the comments I, I've made um in the press today in regards to um, you know, the depth of the backyard. Just remember that there are people in your communities that think six hundred square metres is a small lot. They ain't seen nothing until if this is imposed in places like Mount Cotton, Thornlands, Victoria Point, Thornside, where two hundred square metres will be the normal sized block in your city. Um, and that's without the associated infrastructure, not necessarily near, near centres and services. So it's really important we make a statement on behalf of our city, but also on behalf of what seems to be the state um sticking their nose into what has traditionally been planning for our communities. So I'm pointing back to councillor Boglari to sum up if she wishes to say anything, anything further and then it'd be great to um get on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you, all right, I'll put the motion in those in favour. Those against? That's carried unanimously, thank you. The next item is fifteen point three, move councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to councillor Boglari?
Oh, thank you, I, I think everyone's um read the report, we've had a brief discussion on it. Uh, this is to progress this um project, which has a lot of benefits for our city. The northern greenway is a very underutilized at the moment um transport corridor, and we're changing it to a northern greenway, which has a much more pleasant sound to it. It will encourage visitors, once it eventually gets through this design stage to construction, it will encourage visitors, pedestrians and cyclists to our area, which will benefit our local communities. It'll also um provide safe passage for several students, mainly in councillor Bishop's and mine, and then down to um councillor Mitchell's area, it encompasses um several um northern suburbs. And during COVID, we saw very strongly how important our pathways and corridors were for our, the mental health and physical health of our community, and this will be an amazing pathway in that regard as well. So I encourage everybody just to um approve it to get on to the next stage.
Any speakers against? Question? No, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Those against? Those in favour? Councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, councillor Beridge, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against councillor Gole, thank you. All right. Now the next item councillors, I'm going to break the tradition, because I know a lot of people um here who have played, have played a part um would like to move this motion. And in order to um make sure that no one's going to be arguing about who should be moving it, who shouldn't, I'm going to move the officer's recommendation and ask for a secondary if I may councillor Mitchell. Um, and I, I will start by saying that um there's not too many people in this room that I can see and look at right now that haven't been in some way um advocating for an outcome such as this, and it's still a little ways to go. And I'd like to acknowledge um a number of councillors. And just to start with, I know that councillor Boglari's often, often been um, you know, promoting this opportunity. Councillor Talty, you changed the motion for last um when we went to this process to make sure it was located in a place where it was possible. Councillor Beridge, you had the original motion and I appreciate that we've all had um a great desire, not only just for the benefit of our, our wildlife, um but this offers opportunities for tourism, it offers opportunities for education and in particular um what's been proposed by the RSPCA. But I wanted to use this as an example of how each and every one of us in this organisation, whether it's um someone doing our gardening that works for Redland City Council at the front, or whether it's the CEO, plays a role in advocating for good outcomes for our community. And um we have a team now called AMPS that, you know, does that more formally. But um in my discussions with the CEO over many years, talking about my expectations on behalf of you, you know, this, this networking opportunity um to build relationships and sell the story of Redland's coast um to anyone we meet, both within our city and beyond, is really, really important. Um, and I wanted to take this opportunity to say that, you know, this discussion, despite all of us having great important push and, and having discussions with other private enterprise like Sirumay and um the Sheldon College, the Corumben Wildlife Sanctuary, you name it, we've had those discussions, many of us. Um, this was really generated by um the CEO being around the table with other CEOs. Um, and it demonstrates how important those relationships can be and what we can do as individuals in the organisation. So I'd, I'd like to um firstly thank the CEO for, you know, representing our views around that table. Um, and they, you know, their strong views been held for a long time, so it wasn't hard for you to figure out it would be a good idea. Um, but I think, you know, I'd like you to all join me in thanking the CEO for that opportunity, although we've played part, so thank the CEO. And team, of course, and that was just the start, well, I'm looking at the back and, and seeing some nods, um. Here's their, here's their. And James, um. Um, at this point in time, I'm happy to reference the officer's um work on, on this, because it has been quite a long journey. Um, but I did want to actually ask the CEO to talk about how this discussion occurred and the importance of advocacy from every one of us in this room. So CEO, if you'd be happy to just uh fill us in on that, that journey and, and maybe um some highlights as to why we're here today. So it's, and it's just the very first step, there'll be plenty of more opportunities to talk this, I'm sure.
Yeah, thanks madam mayor, um thanks councillors, um. Uh, I guess I'd say at the outset that this is always a team effort and lots of people have been involved over many years to get not only the, I guess, the position of who we are on Redland's coast and what we represent in our brand. Um, but we have great officers um behind the scenes and sometimes in front of the scenes who actually brought all this to fruition, and I'm looking particularly at Graham down the back there, I know um uh James and Rod Baxter, I think was also involved, but Louise's team. Um, I guess, you know, my saying is that everyone is an advocate and um, yeah, this, this is a demonstration of us working towards a common goal. Um, all of us, that's council and officers, and it's a case of just using existing relationships, existing stakeholder relationships that we have, of which we have many and varied, and being on message. Um, council's involvement in wildlife research, our conservation, our ongoing management. Um, we've got more um news that will come up in the next few weeks about um our ability to attract grants for some of that wildlife research is really starting to position us as a city. And when I look at that particular location, um as really quite a, a hub when you combine it with our Indigenous Scapes Environmental Education Centre, our world-class officers who are doing some fabulous work in the conservation space. Um, and I'm really excited about what's a great opportunity for our city going forward and um look forward to, you know, moving beyond an MOU with um the RSPCA and um really working with them in partnership for their wildlife hospital and wildlife centre of excellence.
Thank you CEO, and if I could just then extend our thanks and gratitude um to the whole team, those who are in the room and those who aren't. Um, we know that you have a passion for what you do and, and that passion that has paid off in this instance, so we're really grateful. Um, and it's, you know, it's not something to be sneezed at, the work that's happened, the science that's happened around koalas in our city. You know, the relationships we have with universities, uh et cetera, have really put us in a position where we can really talk highly about um our credentials as environmental stewards and, and I think that's all paid with some. We've now, we've now seen the rewards of, of that work that's been done. Um, so I'm happy to take any speakers against? A question councillor?
Yeah, I will frame this as a question and absolute respect and, and thanks to officers, uh councillors uh and also to the philanthropists and RSPCA. The, the question I, I would like to pose is, we also have had a huge longstanding relationship and reliance on our wildlife carers. And I suspect that one of the challenges that we might just need to manage as an expectation going forward is just how this facility will just continue that respect and support for, for the work that they have been doing for an extended period. Just want to make sure that we are still respecting and very grateful for what they've been doing for a very long period of time. Just wanting to see if we've got alignment, if there's any adjustments or changes, because this is us.
Probably early days, I'd say.
Yeah, but I think it's important that we acknowledge that they are the ones who are doing the heavy lifting in terms of responding now. This is a great opportunity over the horizon, whatever we can do to support them.
Thank you councillor. Um, so the uh response is that we see this as an opportunity to, I guess, reinforce and enhance what we already do in that space. So um as we know, the, the transport of wildlife that may be injured, um yeah, it's, it's a tight lag which sits around that. So this opportunity actually helps us be able to triage a lot better and lead to better results. So um what we see the partnership with RSPCA doing is actually building upon what we've got, which is an excellent base, and that's well recognised. Um, you know, we, we've reached out and informed that network separately about what's, what's happening. Um, that'll just be a continuation of how we improve those operational elements that, that's it um behind that.
Just wanted to, Graham, while you're at the microphone, just um for clarity, for community, um really what we're offering in this MOU is the space. We're not actually building it, it'll be up to the RSPCA to ra- raise the funds, and there's already been an announcement by the federal government in regards to supporting that, um and the state, I believe, but I don't know what funds the state have provided yet. So I just might, just for the record, be clear about what this MOU um enables us to do and the limits of that at this point.
Uh, yeah, thanks madam there, so, so uh definitely the MOU is about the, the space. So uh as we know, the Indigenous Scapes precinct, which has my horizon, and the Indigenous Scapes centre itself uh has additional community.
uh has additional community facility land. And so uh the partnership uh that we're entering into with the um the RSPCA is first and foremost providing that land to allow them to um get on with the business of raising capital so they can actually put the building onto the site. So, so that's the, the distinction um that sits around that um, that MOU.
Councillor Mitchell, you also had a question?
It's probably through you to Graham and I, I absolutely appreciate the RSPCA uh there and we can't speak for them, but I have every faith in them as a great organisation and their own officers. It raised great interest on Stradig, on Mangeraba and Wildlife, Mangeraba Wildlife Rescue, uh we're interested in this. So I guess visioning and thinking what partnerships may come into the future um for our Redlands Coast Islands. So I'm thinking of course Mangeraba, but also Kuchi and I'm sure on the Simbi there are carers and what sort of things might that help to enhance, knowing you can't speak for RSPCA but as a skilled officer.
Uh, thank you councillor Mitchell. So um probably goes back to the, the previous question to some extent in that the RSPCA built, uh brings in a significant um operational capability, um in a um significant set of skills um that sit in that wildlife space. So um I guess just being closer to what we do um allows that opportunity to, to do more. And so that would logically, at my moment, extend to what might happen on to, on North Frabro Island, for example. Um, just being able to, to, to offer that better care uh to wildlife. So those things are matters which we'll continue to explore. So part of the partnership is actually about how we can do, do that kind of work better. Um, so I can see that, you know, firmly being in, in perspective.
Thank you. I think you said ongoing conversation, the communitys will be interested in. Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, if I could just sum, sum up?
I was just sorry, um I just wanted to also acknowledge councillors that um when this was uh put out in the media release, previous councillors from before I even got in um were saying how happy they were and how when, I think was the era development out there was um approved, a condition of it, was this land came over to council. So that was back in, I think, two thousand and five, it was before my day. And one of the reasons why that land was dedicated was for a koala hospital.
It was for community purpose. It wasn't actually designated, but it fits perfectly.
Yeah, but one of the, one of the purposes that they were hoping would be there. So now that we've got this um fantastic partnership opportunity and it's happening, um yeah, there's, like you said before, there's a lot of a lot of councillors and a lot of teamwork that's gone into this one.
Yeah, and look, I want to acknowledge, I'm, I'm, I've allowed that, but we're at question point now and I want just, because everyone wants to have a say. I know everyone in this room is supportive of it. And I know the councillors previous, um, you know, those who actually negotiated the um the land dedication and those who saw the opportunities for it, they all played a part in getting to this point and there's still a ways to go. But can I also, can I also acknowledge um that it, it's not, you know, there's many partners that have been involved and, you know, particularly we know as Graham said, that Horizon, My Horizon's on that site and the opportunities for them to um collaborate with RSPCA and opportunities for what they do um is also something that probably at this point in time we won't realise, but down the track will be a great opportunity. Um, so councillors, without further ado, I'd like to put the motion, those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. I've not been advised of any notice of intention to appeal or amend resolutions, but there is a notice of motion from councillor Mitchell. Would you like to move that motion councillor?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and, and my great pleasure. We've talked a lot today about um, you know, shaping our community and enhancing lives and lifestyles. And certainly councils can't control everything. But I think uh here is one error where I think we can uh control, what we can control and contribute more and it's in our Cleveland Principal Activity Centre. Um, so the intent of the notice motion is, is quite clear. It's really to provide that, as it says, visibility and support to the planning and implementation of projects and services undertaken by council in relation to the Principal Activity Centre to recommit to delivering on the intent of the Cleveland Centre Master Plan with a focus on its vision for Cleveland and prioritised delivery through a well-coordinated, place-based approach and this number of other items there. This really builds on the work that's been done over the last few years. And I'd like to first of all acknowledge councillors in this room, this council, I feel, has been um much more proactive and positive towards our, our principal activity centres and, and Cleveland. So thank you for that. Um, I think the uh officers, the CEO, setting up um uh AMP and the economic development field. I know that that has also helped to focus and shape and coordinate much better um uh coordination of the services across council and increasingly out to our business community. Small business, landowners, property managers and, and the community. Plenty been done, plenty more to go. Um, and also uh the last council, actually, it was uh February twenty twenty.
Councillor Mitchell, and I should have pulled you up a lot earlier. Sorry, yeah, it's just been a long, it's been a long morning. We do need a second if your motion.
That would be welcome.
Councillor Mackenzie, and I won't, no, I'm not starting the, I'm not starting the clock.
Oh, come on. Ma, continue. I'm, I'm surprised that everyone doesn't want to hear that again, but anyway, I'll um, well, sorry. Oh, yeah, uh September, oh, sorry, February twenty twenty, I think it was last council when we um uh that council uh voted for uh the centres management uh programme to really uh begin. And that was really welcome. So I was just pointing to, you know, we're building into this and, and I'm really grateful for what's happened. I'm always impatient, of course, I'm a passion for uh, for my Cleveland Centre as a, like a resident and a, and a local councillor. Um, but I think this is going to support what we've done and build on it. So this really no new, well, apart from the report to uh council in a public forum that I've requested. And I think that's really important. Uh, that is the only place that all the elements of activity that are going on in the Cleveland Principal Activity Centre will come together to be reported in one place to councillors, but more importantly to the community. Um, while I know officers have been increasingly uh working across the business units uh because that is the culture of the place, that is the ethos of our, our council. But this notice of motion will give our collective weight to say, yes, carry on and please do even more, which is exactly what we want in all our precincts and areas. So I think it's fairly straightforward. The complexity of a principal activity centre is really a mini-city. So think of something that happens in a city and that will be happening in a principal activity centre. And hence the importance of that unique and extra attention uh on Cleveland, but also of course on Kapalaba. And I believe that the intent of this notice of motion will flow over into other areas, including our small villages. Because it will enhance that culture of this organisation as well as the reporting lines being the will of council backing up the culture of Redlands City Council. So thank you.
Speaker against councillor Boglari?
I'll, I'll take it as a speaker again so that I can, I can speak. I'm just very, uh, look, totally support though, supporting Cleveland. Um, I tried desperately to get the RPEC um master plan through a few years ago, which um was Gary, one of Gary Patina's babies. It would have been amazing. I know, I noticed you mentioned it, it just didn't get sufficient support back then. Um, my concern is to be, I don't believe we can require council officers to deliver the master plan. I, I, I think that word require is, that, that's telling, that, that's us telling the council officers they've got to do it. Whereas it's outside people who will be building and deciding what developments um they put in. So I just think
I might get an opposite or
I think that word require, I might just need changing that sort.
I think I'll ask an officer, but it also says through a well-coordinated, place-centred approach, which is not necessarily about building it. It's, it's building this
We're directing them to, to deliver it, which they
I think you've got to read in context of the last couple of words.
Is that, is that a speaker against or a spell check or a motion change?
It's speaker against councillor. If you have point of order, she said that.
Okay.
Um, I'm just, I just wanted to clarify with the, with the couns-, with the council officer that it, it's actually focusing on the well-coordinated, well-coordinated, place-centred approach that is required to be delivered by officers, not the whole master plan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. That was certainly our interpretation when councillor Mitchell provided the notice of motion to us. We see the focus being on the place-centred approach as being the, the bit, the required part to then deliver the master plan. Um, you could finesse that if you, if you felt the need, but I, I, for us, it's clear as officers, that was what we took from them.
It's probably just, it could have probably been slightly different. Um, by just saying require council officers to deliver.
Yeah, because I can't, I can't agree, I can't agree to instructing council officers to deliver the Cleveland.
I think, but I think the officers, the officers are saying it's, that's not what, that's, they don't take that um, that meaning. Yeah, but you've got to read it in context, the whole sentence. Okay, um, anything else councillor Boglari? Speaker for? Councillor Hughes?
Uh, uh, thank you and thank you councillor Mitchell. Appreciate the uh passion that we all have and you're leading your area. And just recently I brought a similar notice of motion for Kapalaba. So I think we all are on the same page and as councillor Boglari said, you know, we, we support our local areas and the work that can be done here. I just would like to clarify that there's, we've talked about that there's no great change in intent, just a me, a report coming and that will come back to council. So in the Kapalaba notice of motion, it was a report coming back to a workshop, not to council. So there's a, a slight difference there, but there's no dollar value attached to this notice of motion. Is, is that correct?
No additional dollar value, officers?
Thank you, um councillor three, Madam Mayor. I think as councillor Mitchell articulated, it was certainly officer view that the only additional burden upon us would be the production of that report to council. Um, we continue to deliver the master plan today. We continue with our place um management approach. That's ongoing work of officers. We're doing, and, and on behalf of my colleagues, you know, we're continuing to implement all aspects of the Cleveland um precinct, um in all our different uh work areas. So no, it's certainly not our view that this would result in additional burden on the organisation beyond that um singular report.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, look, I well, I think I did. I had, I had my hand up at the same time as councillor Boglari. Yeah.
Thank you.
Speaking? Thank you. Um, I appreciate the intent as a local councillor for this area. Cleveland is critical to our city and I believe that our focus should be on a centres review strategy so that we can actually clarify for the city where our focus areas should be. I believe that should have been what we should have done with the previous notice of motion from councillor Hughes as well. That that is actually the, the appropriate order to actually make sure that officers' time is put into uh an area that is in line with the community expectations and around the, the, the central role of these centres. Officers have been continuing to do all of these things, as councillor Mitchell has said. Uh, the amount of work that is happening in Cleveland that has been happening consistently is, is of a very high uh level. And I don't see what is going to be coming back that's extra apart from an expectation that some other things might need to appear to happen. And I'm just concerned that we might be spreading our offices too thin, raising other expectations. And I think officers have got enough on their plate. I think what they do in Cleveland is clear. Uh, there are some things that we could make more consistent, including the integration of RPEC. Uh, we've looked at all sorts of transport strategies. I think those things are all things that we've been looking at. I'm comfortable with where we're at and I just see this as, um, forgive me, it just seems to be uh an, an extra layer of expectation that I'm not quite sure what it's actually delivering. So that's my view.
Speaker for? Councillor Gole, I will um speak for it and then allow you to speak against it if you wish. Sorry? Well, because they both put their hands up the same time councillor Berry. Are you withdrawing it yet? Okay. And that, that is really inappropriate behaviour as well. Thanks councillor. Thank you. Moving on, we don't, questions? Do you have a question councillor Berry? Councillor, your facial expressions and noises are being noted by people online.
Well, I can remember once, twice, more times wanting to say a something and not being allowed because there was no speaker for or against. But however, there's rules for some and rules for others.
Now, moving on.
So my question is very simple. Um, if we look at point one, provide visibility, support to the planning, Cleveland Principal Activity. Council will commit to deliver to the Cleveland Centre master, uh master plan. I, I have to agree with councillor Bishop. This is part of our day-to-day planning. And I believe, and I've only looked at this this morning, so I haven't done any great research, but I believe it's in our corporate plan that we are to deliver um more, a plus, what do you call it, place? What do they call that thing? Place, placemaker, thank you, uh for Cleveland. Am I wrong? Am, am I wrong? It, it, so it is in the corporate plan that we adopted in twenty twenty. So why have we got a motion today?
So you don't need to respond councillor.
Oh, oh, because I don't know why we got one when it's in the corporate plan.
Well, there's, there's more than just that in the motion councillor, if you read down the um, the list.
I did, and a lot of it repeats.
Those things aren't
A lot of it repeats point one. But anyway, all right.
Let's just ask for a report to council, that's not in the corporate plan. Okay, uh, any other speakers for? Or against, so that I don't upset anyone in the room? And we'll just pass on back to you councillor Mitchell. Hmm? He didn't. He didn't want, he withdrew his desire to say anything. Uh, I'm, I'm not going to allow it, councillor, seeing I, I'd be, you know. Standing orders don't allow for comments. Councillor Mitchell, want to sum up?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, the notice of motion before us um provides clarity on things that are happening. I think we spoke to it before. There's very little resources. There's no need to water down or deny a very good notice of motion, I believe, that enhances planning and strategy and coordination. Probably saves time, probably saves money um in, in delivering to our area. Um, if a centre strategy is needed, fantastic, bring a notice of motion and we'll move that forward. But work such as this and that's been done at Kapalaba really backs up and informs those, that intent. So we, you don't want to jam the brakes on just because you want to do more. Let's accelerate. We're trying to get into first and second year, so let's not go back into neutral to end up in fourth, would be my strategy. Let's keep moving forward. Um, officers have said they're not spread thin by this, so that's not true. Um, so we'll just move on from there. And if people want more resources into centres, well, let's make that clear through to our uh CEO and get more staff into these areas of economic development. So that's wonderful. Um, councillor Berry, I'm sorry that you did no research, uh but you were invited to a meeting that you declined, so.
Uh, point of order? I, I, I find the tone of that very insulting and I think in the, where is this book of reference that we've got here?
Sorry about the tone, but it's the
Yeah, no, it is.
Councillor Berry, that is not a point of, that is not a point of order. You did decline the meeting.
I asked him a question and he had an opportunity to respond, not in the summing up.
Councillor, that's a warning of inappropriate um behaviour in a meeting. It's a warning. And I ask you to refrain from using that type of behaviour in the future. Councillor Mitchell, you may continue.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I didn't hear a question through the chair.
Councillor Berry, that will be your second warning.
Oh, thank you. Look, as I've said, I should be to leave because as I've said many times, there's rules for one and rules for another.
Standing orders and if you need to understand them, you should be reading. Standing orders and if you need to understand them, you should be reading. I'm not asking you to go, but I'm asking you to apologise for your behaviour. And that'll be your, your, that your second warning, to refrain from that type of behaviour. Talking over people while they're on, have the floor. And making comments or noises is not appropriate behaviour. So could you please apologise to councillor Mitchell? And then councillor Mitchell can finish what he's doing.
I will not apologise to councillor Mitchell when I called a point of order.
You didn't have a point, councillor, you didn't have a point of order. He was stating a fact.
I did.
I'll ask an officer to come up here, thank you, and help me in dealing with an appropriate.
The language and tone is.
Councillor, that'll be your third warning. While the chair is speaking, you do not speak over the top. I've given you lots of warnings right at the beginning of this meeting. You did decline a meeting to the, to councillor Mitchell's offer. And to talk about this, there was nothing in this tone other than the fact. So if you refer to, if you refer to your um, standing orders, councillors. So let me just read it for you so you're all very clear.
Let's get councillor Beridge again. Let's get her again.
Councillor, I'm just asking you to live by the same standing order as everybody else. All you need to do is to apologise for the facial expressions. And noises made as a result of councillor Mitchell. In fact, it's disparaging council. It's a code of conduct issue. And all you need to do now is apologise for that and we can move on.
I'm sorry, ca, um, Madam Mayor, but I will not apologise. And as I've said many times, your role in the chair. Is to run a fair meeting, not to show bias. And that's what I've seen all day.
Councillor.
So if I am going to apologise for anything, it's being outspoken about that and I'm happy to go now.
Councillor, um, uh, you can do whatever you wish to do. I'm not asking you to do anything other than to cease, cease your behaviour. You have to have a respect for the people in the room and actually making noises and faces is not one of those. So let me read it.
I will not be apologised.
Person decides, and I'm deciding this is absolutely unsuitable meeting conduct. You must cease the unsuitable, uh, the unsuitable meeting conduct and refrain from exhibiting the conduct. I ask you to apologise for the conduct you have refused. You won't withdraw the com, um, the comments. So then if you don't comply. I can actually now request for remedial action and that will be to ask for an order to be issued. And I'm asking for that now. Thank you councillors. Um, thank you officers, to put that in the minutes. Thank you. That's your first order councillor. You better understand the standing orders from here on in. So that you don't have to repeat that behaviour and we don't have to repeat that action. Moving back to you councillor Mitchell? No, I, I, I'm happy to, I'm happy. No, she doesn't have to leave. Well, that's, that's her choice. That's her choice. She doesn't have to leave.
Will not put up with that abuse anymore.
Councillor, councillor, councillor Mitchell.
You, you have an abusive power here. You know it. You use it.
Councillor, I am not abusing power.
You use it to me all the time.
Councillor, that is um, once again, inappropriate behaviour at a meeting and that'll be another warning. It is defamatory. Thank you. Councillor Mitchell, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'll just finish the way I started by thanking all councillors for their support over this term. The notice of motion reinforces our commitment to this principal activity centre and will enhance. Future planning, in my opinion, towards a centres review in, including, um. The report that will come back is the only extra work and once a year, a report. On a principal activity centre, not a park, but a principal activity centre, I think is fair and reasonable. For our community, who we all know are very interesting in Cleveland. That's really the only extra. So I think this is a very sensible. Uh, notice of motion. Thank you for your previous support. I look forward to the support of this motion.
I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against. Those in favour, councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Gole, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes. Councillor Williams, those against councillor Hewlett and councillor Bishop. Thank you. All right, councillors, the next item, um, it goes into our confidential session. So I'm just going to ask if you're required to have confidential. So we need to move into confidential session, move councillor Hughes, seconded councillor Mackenzie, those in favour, those against. Those in favour. Those against. Those in favour councillor Boglari, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Edwards, councillor Talty, councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Hughes, councillor Bishop, councillor Williams, those against councillor Gole. Okay, um, so with that, we'll need to clear the room. Um, apologise, uh, you've had such an entertaining afternoon, um, but we have some confidential. Sorry, yes, I do go that very quickly. Twenty point one, how are we going there? Yes, um, and yes, I'm, I'm just making, I can settle in, we're making sure we're live, we're all good. Um, item twenty point one, move in second, thanks. Move councillor Boglari, seconded councillor Edwards, those in favour. Those against, that's carried unanimously. Item twenty point two, uh, moved by councillor Boglari, seconded by councillor Talty, those in favour. Those against, those in favour, those against, that's carried unanimously. I just um, note that councillor Beridge is absent for all these. Items. Item twenty point three, um, move in second and move councillor, move councillor, stop it. Move councillor Mitchell, seconded councillor Bishop, those in favour, those against, that's carried unanimously. Um, councillors, before we close the meeting, um, with a couple of minutes to spare. Can I just remind you to, if you haven't done it already, sign the attendance sheet? Um, and uh, once again, I thank you for your participation in today's meeting. It, it was probably a little bit more complex than I anticipated. Um, but um, appreciate the, the debate that we had and I closed the meeting at two a, uh, two p m. Yeah, I felt like it. Thank you.